You're leaving us again.
Good evening, everybody. Let's come to order while the room fills up a little bit and if you could, please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
Through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Thank you, guys. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Certainly. All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 7. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time to adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by the city and state authorities. This planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on November 29th and re-sunshines November 30th and December 3rd. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right, thank you, Cam. Could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. All right, so we've got Commissioner Allen.
President.
All right, Commissioner Takur.
Here.
All right, Commissioner Torres.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
All right, and Commissioner, who will be stepping in as vice chair once Dr. Gonzalez has to step out, soon to be acting vice chair Gangadhan.
Here.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
All right, we've got six commissioners present. We have a form.
Okay, could we swear in the staff, please, Mike?
I see Cameron Mallory, Matt. And I thought I saw Francisco. Here we go. You guys swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, let's move on to correspondence. Just before we start, we do have correspondence from myself. Uh, I would like to take a moment of silence tonight for the 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day. Okay, thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. All right, Cam, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do, quite a lot. Um, so the bulk of them are already noted on the last re-sunshine version of the agenda. However, I'm gonna breeze through them quickly and then we've got four developments that have decided to carry one at, well, three, and then one that decided to withdraw. So here we go, I'm gonna try to do this fast. So item seven, review and discussion of the updates to the master plan carried to January 18th of 2022. Item eight, 819 West Side Ave to be carried to January 4th of 2022. Item nine, 399 Holiday Street to be carried to January 4th of 2022. Item 10, 682 Route 440 to be carried to January 4th, uh, year 2022. Uh, item 11, 35 Cottage Street is to be carried to January 4th of 2022. These are all with preservation of notice and now we have 24 P 20 dash 102. This was not listed on the agenda as carried, but it is requesting to be carried to January 4th with preservation of notice in the year 2022. So that is 804 to 810 West Side Avenue, case P 20 dash 102. I'll put this on the chat as well. Next, we've got item 25, which is withdrawing, and that is case P 21 dash 123. That's address 88 region. So that is withdrawing. Now, item 27, 477 Ocean Avenue is with, uh, carrying with preservation of notice to January 4th of 2022. Again, that's P 21 dash 068. And that's it.
Sorry, Cam, I just missed it. Did you also include carrying the preservation of notice of the master plan update?
Yes, and it's listed on the agenda like that. Um, I did like an umbrella carrying of preservation notice after I said all five of the first items. But yeah, I'm gonna put that in the chat right now.
Okay, thanks, Cam. Um, yes, I'll try and refer back to the chat a few times tonight if anybody's tuning in and, you know, comes in late. So let's get into, uh, we actually have old business, but uh, we are gonna lose Dr. Gonzalez in, uh, in a few. He is actually tuning in from an airport right now. Uh, I'd like to move the, um, annual planning board reorganization up first. So I would open it up for nominations for chairman.
So I'd like to make a motion at this time to nominate Chairman Chris Langston.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Seeing that I moved to close nomination.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Nominations are closed. Uh, Cam, I'll take a roll call, please.
All right, Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Takur.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadhan.
Hi.
And Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Hi.
Chris, thank you so much for all your work that you do.
Thank you, guys.
Very dedicated and committed.
Cam, you didn't call me.
Great job, Chris. Thank you very much, man. You're a great.
Cam, you didn't call me, but I'll abstain.
Always. Motion carries five in favor, one abstaining.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so at this time, I will open it up for Vice Chair. I'd like to nominate, uh, Dr. Orlando Gonzalez for the position of Vice Chairman. Okay, we have a motion and a second for Orlando. Uh, do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nomination for Vice Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Cam, can we have a roll call, please?
All right, Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Takur.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadhan.
Hi.
Chairman Langston.
Hi.
And Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
I'll abstain.
Okay, that works. Five in favor, one abstaining. Thank you, Orlando. I appreciate you, man.
Thank you, thank you.
You do a great job.
Thank you, Orlando.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, guys.
All right, uh, so at this time, I will open it up for nominations for Board Secretary. Uh, I'd like to nominate Cameron Black.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Cameron Black as secretary. Any other nominations? Uh, Cam, we'll do a co-secretary or vice secretary separately, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other nominations for secretary?
Seeing no more nominations, I move to close.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Nominations are closed. I'll take a roll call, Cam.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Takur.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadhan.
Hi.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Chairman Langston.
Hi, and uh, thank you, Cam. I appreciate everything you do for me. You always pick up that phone, man. No matter what you're doing, you always pick up that phone.
All right, I've got it first.
Cameron, I just wanna say for the record, uh, we, Cameron really rose to the occasion. He got, uh, we lost somebody in the middle of the year, and he really stepped up, and I just wanna, it would be a miss if I didn't say something on the record to say that he's been doing a great job. And we're really glad to have him.
A great job, Cam.
Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you.
All right, so.
I missed the mustache though, but it's a good job.
Yeah, me too. All right, so I'd like to make a, uh, I'm sorry, I'll open it up for, um, what are we calling it? Co-secretary or vice secretary?
Deputy.
Deputy Secretary, okay. Uh, I'd like to open up nominations for Deputy Secretary, and I'd like to nominate Matt Ward for Deputy Secretary.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Matt Ward as Deputy Secretary. Do we have any other nominations? Any other nomination?
Seeing that I moved to close, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Uh, we'll take a roll call for Matt.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Takur.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadhan.
Hi.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Cameron Langston.
Hi.
All right, motion carries all in favor.
All right, Matt.
Thank you so much for your work as well.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, and I just also wanted a second with Tony was saying that Cameron's been doing a great job.
Absolutely.
Good job, Cameron.
Congratulations, Matt.
The whole team is a good team. You have to do a great job.
You're not wrong. Great team, not wrong. Uh, all right, let's, uh, get into old business then. We'll call case P 20 dash 072. That is a minor site plan for 370 to 372 Princeton Ave. And this is, uh, with testimony taken on November 23rd.
All right, I'm promoting Stephen Joseph.
And once again, anybody tuning in just now, um, there are a number of items carried tonight. If you could refer to the chat, uh, they're all listed in the chat. And, uh, thank you.
Okay, uh, good evening, everyone. Stephen Joseph of the Trauma Law Firm for the applicant. Cam, we should have, uh, Eric Lahita somewhere in the participants. He's our engineer. The engineering report was uploaded to the portal. We did take testimony, a lot of testimony at the last hearing, so we could get Eric sworn in, do a, you know, a quick, um, just overview of the engineering report and field questions. That's probably the best way to.
Sounds good, counsel.
All right. Hi, Eric, I'll swear you in. If you raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you get tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Eric Lahita, E R I C L A H I T A.
Thank you.
And Lahita, good evening. Um, I know we qualified you last time. We are in a new month, so I do have to check if your license is current.
It is, yeah.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified again.
Okay, great. Now, Eric, I know we took some testimony last time, but if you just wanna give a, a quick overview, the, the board now has the report, so we could then field some questions after that.
Okay, um, so, uh, similar to last time, uh, I'm just gonna run through it in general terms. My office was asked to visit, uh, the site and respond to concerns by the board uh, and the community regarding the construction of the proposed development at 370, 372 Princeton Ave. And, uh, in the body of the report, I just responded, uh, in writing to the previous planning board transcripts, uh, of March 23rd, 2021. With regard to our assessment, just in short, uh, if you go to page six of that report, it just basically says, "With respect to constructing a new building next to existing older row houses or historic buildings, this can be completed safely and without incident as long as the adjacent building is not undermined or stirred by excessive vibration or impact." Uh, after reviewing the plans by Weckman Architecture and the Geotech Report by Johnson Soils, uh, this office believes that 370, 372 Princeton uh, can be constructed safely without damage to the adjacent buildings. So, um, and then we have a bunch of appendices, A through G, which kind of go through, um, you know, some of the pertinent documents. So that's basically it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lahita. Um, yeah, it's a very detailed report. Thank you. We appreciate it. I've had a trans to go, or a chance to go over it. Um, it's been on the, the web portal for, uh, two weeks now. I'm sorry, for a week now. The only question I would have, I guess, is for Mr. Joseph. I just wanna make sure that, you know, the building department follows up with the engineering report and, and any suggestions made by Mr. Lahita as far as, you know, we talked about drainage last time and, and the pitching of, you know, the, the, I'm drawing a blank, but, but as far as, um, you know, when they start to dig, uh, that the pitch is maintained to be, uh, the wall next door, that, you know, just everything that the engineering report refers to is, is brought up with the building department.
Understood, yeah. The applicant agrees to that as a condition.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else? Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Lahita.
Thank you.
And counsel, that's your presentation, correct?
That concludes our testimony this evening.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we did open it up for public comment on, uh, our last meeting. You are able to comment tonight on any of the engineering-related issues on site. So anything referring to the engineering report, so I will open it up for public comment. If you'd like to comment on this application and strictly on the engineering testimony, uh, you could raise your hand. And if you are calling in, you could press star nine to raise your hand. And that is just to comment on this application tonight. Anybody from public?
Mr. Chair, I don't see anyone from public. I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Public is closed and Cameron, this is your application. Any, uh, anything you wanna add?
No, just keeping the same conditions of approval that were stated in the original staff memo. Planning staff has been, um, you know, working with the applicant from the beginning here, and, uh, you know, they had a lot of ups and downs, a lot of unforeseen difficulties here, and they've, they've done their, you know, due diligence to be a respectful neighbor, and, uh, planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Cam.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 20 dash 072 as presented to the board here tonight.
I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, but before you do that, I just wanna state for the record that the applicant agrees to all the conditions in the, in the second book.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, so I'll remake my motion to approve case P 20 dash 072 as presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Chairman, just before we call the roll, I know that we have six commissioners. I don't believe we had six at the last hearing, Cam.
That's correct, so.
Let's just certify that.
Dallas.
That wasn't here. I know you circulated the transcript, so let's just get that on the record.
Correct, yes. So, Dr. Gonzalez, you, you read the transcript, correct?
I did.
Okay, so we've got that on the record now.
Thank you.
I was not there too.
Yeah, we're talking about the last meeting, correct? Last week?
Correct.
Okay.
I read it too.
Okay, super. Sorry about that. I forgot about you.
And, uh, Dr. Gonzalez was on that meeting.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Cam's given us his, um, his report. So let's enter in a roll call, Cam.
All right, Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Takur.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadhan.
Hi.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Uh, I, I do wanna thank the applicant. Um, you know, we asked for a lot and, uh, you know, they gave us everything we wanted and, and just to do our due diligence, uh, you know, I'm very satisfied with, uh, with the engineering report they supplied, so I vote I.
Motion carries all in favor. We're with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, let's move on to item 16. It's case P 21 dash 135 is a section 31 review, uh, the address being 325 to 353 Route 1 and 9.
All right. I'm promoting Drew Banghart. And I'm promoting. Hey, Drew, um, is Itza on? I don't see her email, um, her screen name.
Uh, I don't know. She might not be joining. Um, if you look for Mark Conger.
All right.
He might be on for Arcatus as well as Gina Canones and Jerry Speesback, um, might be on, but, uh, good evening, Chairman Langston. Board Commissioners.
Let's just have you sworn in, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
How's it going, Drew? If you could just raise your right hand. Do you want any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Drew Banghart, D R E W B A N G H A R T.
All right, thank you, Mr. Banghart. I, uh, I apologize for cutting you off there.
No problem.
Take it away.
Um, well, sorry, Drew, if you could just tell me a little more. Um, I can only find Mark Chiswete and, and Mark Conger.
Uh, yeah, Mark Conger.
Okay.
Is, uh, involved with the project as well as I see, uh, Gina Canones, G I N A.
Okay, that's why.
UI, okay.
Hi, good evening. Yes, I'm here.
Oh, thank you.
And then, uh, I guess Gina and Mark, is it just you two tonight?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, good evening, everyone. Uh, this is, uh, not a glorious, uh, you know, application, but nonetheless, it's a big step in getting the PJP landfill delisted from the national priorities list. Uh, Arcatus has been involved for a long time in getting us to this point with a lot of environmental investigation. Uh, we have a short presentation that they have prepared to give you guys some background on the project, uh, to get to the delisting and the, the subdivision. Um, I guess maybe I'll turn it over to Mark right now to kinda take it away with some of the background and Cameron, I guess, maybe if we queue up, if Mark, if you want to queue up the presentation, the PowerPoint?
Um, I think, Cam, you were gonna help me with that?
Yep, I'm gonna get it going right now.
Okay.
All right, uh, hi, Mark. I just must swear you in, all right? If you could raise your right hand. You swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And, uh, if you could state and spell your name for me, please?
Sure, it's Mark, M A R C, Conger, C O N G E R.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I was muted there. Uh, good evening, Mr. Conger. Um, so you're gonna be presenting the slideshow?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
So, uh, this is for the PJP landfill, the truck stop portion. Um, located at 325, 353 Route 1 and 9. We've been working on the site since, I don't know, 2010, um, assisting the City of Jersey City Engineering Department with the, uh, the project. Uh, if you can go to the next slide. So the site is a, a former landfill, um, and a truck stop portion, which is to the right of the screen. We had done a, a substantial amount of work on site over the last couple of years, uh, most recently removing, uh, 10 underground storage tanks for, uh, for Jersey City uh, and then working with US EPA and NJDEP for closure, uh, which brings us to this call. Uh, next slide. Please. Um, so little history, the PJP landfill is an 87-acre site. Um, approximately 33 acres of it is a responsibility of the city, and the remainder of the landfill is a responsibility of ABM, AMB Corporation. The 33 acres representing the city's portion, uh, including the truck stop, uh, consists of two contiguous lots, block three and four, uh, with a combined total acreage of, uh, one and a, about an acre and a half. Located on Route 1, just underneath the Pulaski Skyway, and it's, uh, predominantly developed with a one-story and two-story building, uh, that's currently being used by the City of Jersey City Fire Department uh, as a temporary, uh, location. Uh, here's a little bit of a zoom in on the site. Again, not really a big site. Couple of mining wells on site for the environmental investigation as well as the former facility. So originally was a salt marsh. 1968, the state began operating as a landfill accepting chemical and industrial waste. Um, I left out the anecdote, uh, about Jimmy Hoffa being, uh, investigated. I didn't think that was appropriate for this call, but thought it was funny anyway. Um, DEP certified the landfill in 1971, operated until 1974, although there were some allegations that the site was operating until 1984. Uh, 1977, DEP issued an order, uh, to grade and remove waste that was in contact with Sip Def Ditch and Hackitack River. Um, and then failure to comply resulted in USCP adding the landfill to the NPL, uh, priority list in 1983. Uh, the entire landfill has been capped and closed by various responsible parties and is currently in, uh, post-closure monitoring. Uh, the truck stop was first developed in 1940. Been in operation since until City of Jersey City took it over in June of 2010. Uh, it was a gas station, truck stop, diner, bunkhouse, uh, with other ancillary operations such as tire repair, check cashing, propane distribution, and truck and vehicle maintenance. Next slide, please. So this is where it gets a little complicated. Um, under the DEP, been working with the US EPA, uh, the City of Jersey City has satisfactorily met the requirements and can close the site. Uh, over the years, we've prepared a number of reports as a basis and background for this. And basing that on the findings, um, the investigation is complete and US EPA is looking to remove this portion of the site from the entire PJP landfill uh, so that it can be utilized for beneficial reuse, um, essentially delisting it from the NPL. Next slide. Communications with the DEP in 2020, uh, February, uh, asked us to create a new case, which we did, and then, um, under that letter, the department requested that this portion be subdivided for the city's portion of the landfill to facilitate closure. And, uh, right now, what we're looking to do is subdivide the site so that we can file a standalone remedial action permit for soil and groundwater, uh, which will effectively let the, the city, um, designate it for, for reuse as part of the, uh, the COVID Memorial Park they're planning.
All right, that's it.
Okay, anybody, any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Conger. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Banghart, anything else?
No, I think, uh, Mark pretty much summed it up. This is, uh, you know, like I said, a big step towards delisting this from the national priority site and carving out this smaller portion that was the former truck stop to, um, be able to deed notice the property properly. And, uh, you know, we can work on that site and its unique characteristics and, uh, also work on the landfill that'll be cap closed and hopefully delisted in the coming months slash, you know, year in 2022.
Excellent. No, that's great news. Um, and I assume at some point we'll have a, another presentation on the, the memorial park, correct?
Yes, uh, that would be coming from the Division of Architecture. Sure, um, they're, they're heavily involved in spearheading that new, uh, park project. And, you know, hopefully that comes to fruition shortly and is in front of you guys.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, just so everybody's clear, we're not, you know, the vision is for a park. Uh, we're not voting on a park tonight. We're just, uh, accepting a section thirty-one review. Uh, so at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. If anybody wants to comment from the public, uh, if you could, please raise your hand. And if you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. I do see a hand raised.
Voting William.
William Matts, Bill Mattsakoudis here, two Z five Grand Street. Just wanted to briefly, uh,
Congrat. Are you able to turn your camera on real quick? And I just want to swear you in, all right? If you could raise your right hand.
Okay.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
William Mattsakoudis, M A T S I K O U D I S.
Thank you.
Mr. Mattsakoudis, good evening. Um, I think I should say for the record, I do know Mr. Mattsakoudis for years. Um, we have not discussed any of the agenda items tonight. Um, and, you know, I have the utmost respect for Mr. Mattsakoudis, man, Mattsakoudis as an attorney and a, uh, human being. And, um, that being said, that relationship does not affect any of my decisions tonight.
Thank you, Chairman. Congratulations on being reappointed and, uh, and, and to everyone else being reappointed, uh, and for all the hard work that the planning board does. It's an amazing, uh, job you guys do, and I know it's thankless a lot of times and ridiculous amount of hours, so thank you. I just wanted to, uh, briefly comment on this project because back in the day when I was working for the city, I spent a lot of time on it, uh, and, uh, really excited to see this moving forward. And, uh, I heard of Jerry Speesback's name from Arcadis being mentioned, and, uh, so the people from Arcadis give him a shout out from Mattsakoudis. Uh, I, that, that, that guy has put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this project. So congratulations to Arcadis, Jersey City, and, uh, looking forward to the next chapter in that. That's all I got on this. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Council. All right, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hands. And once again, if you're calling in and you want to comment on this application, please, uh, press star nine. Anybody else from public?
Mr. Chair, seeing no more public, I move to close the public portion.
Uh, we do have, uh, we do have one more hand.
Uh, we got him just in time.
We made the motion, we didn't second it, so.
I have allowed them to talk. Phone number ending in two zero eight four, you can unmute yourself.
And I think that's star six, right, Cam, to unmute?
Yes.
So the caller from, uh, phone number two zero eight four, if you could press star six to unmute yourself. We'd love to hear from you. There we go.
There we go.
There you go.
There.
How you doing? Just real quick before you speak, I just want to, uh, swear you in over the phone. Uh, do you swear that any testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And can you state and spell your name, please?
My name is Kyle O'Neil, K Y L E, O apostrophe, N E I L L.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil, good evening. Uh, we do have a five-minute limit for public comments, so, uh, take it away. Chairman Langston, by the way.
No, no, and, and, and I am calling in via train, so I just want to make sure I have the, the right comment. This is for ninety-five Grand Street?
Uh, no, this is for, uh, three twenty-five to three fifty-three Route one and nine.
That, look, you might hear from me later then. I withdraw this comment for, for that, uh, property, sorry.
Uh, what, which one are you here for?
Uh, for ninety-five grand?
Ninety-five green.
Fifty-five green?
Oh, I'm sorry, ninety-five green? Yep, ninety-five green.
Sounds better. Okay, um, that is way down our list. So.
Okay.
Saying we get to it at all tonight. That's, uh.
Okay, I'll stay tuned.
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll keep you posted.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right, uh, anybody else? Once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine if you'd like to comment, to raise your hands. And if you are viewing this meeting, uh, from your home, on your computer, on your mobile device, you can just raise your hands.
Mr. Chair, now I don't see anyone else. Uh, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Um, I don't know who's this is. Cam, is this you?
Yep, that's me.
Um, you want to add?
Planning staff has no further comments. Um, planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I'll entertain a motion. Once again, this is just a section thirty-one review. Uh, we are not approving or denying this application tonight. We are just, um, either agreeing with the findings or not agreeing with the findings. That's all.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept and agree with the findings presented today for case P two one dash zero, I'm sorry, dash one three five.
Hey, we have motion and a second.
All right, Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Takur.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
You know, being a lifelong resident of Jersey City, born and raised, these sites like that, that have been empty. I've basically all contaminated, seen them getting on the right track, that's something one day. It's a great way to say, I am, I should be on his board to be able to do that. I vote aye.
Commissioner Gangadun.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Torres. Um, this is a long time coming. Um, you know, there's a lot of people to thank along the way for this. Um, so, yeah, I'm happily voting aye on this.
Motion carries to approve, review, and, uh, of this section thirty-one.
Okay, thanks, Cam. Uh, Orlando, it's six fifteen. Are we gonna lose you during this application?
I'll have to, uh, probably get out in about twenty minutes.
Okay, we might be able to get you in for the subdivision. Um, let us know, let us know when, uh, your flight gets called there.
Um, Chairman, I believe they're gonna be presenting those as one presentation for the subdivision and the site plan.
Okay, um, up to you, Orlando. You want to hang in there for a little bit, or, uh?
No, I'll hang, if, if it's okay, I can hang in there and then when I have to go, I'll let you guys know.
Okay, you don't just want to sit in the airport and stare out into space for a while?
No, this is fun, or.
Um, all right, so I'll call item seventeen right now on the agenda is case P two one dash one three nine. Uh, it's a preliminary and final major subdivision for one fifteen Jersey City Boulevard and sixty-five to one-on-one Philip Street. Uh, and I'll ask Mr. Harrington, uh, once he comes up, if he'd like to call the next case and, uh, hear him at the same time.
Council, good evening.
Good evening. How are you, Chairman, Commissioners? So I, I heard you asking me something and then it cut out as it was promoting me as panelist.
Uh, so I, I called, um, the subdivision. And, uh, you want to present both, both together tonight?
That, that was our plan. I mean, unless, if the board prefers us to, uh, present the subdivision separately, but I think it, it reads better for the board to understand the purpose of the subdivision if we put, uh, items seventeen and eighteen together.
Okay, that works for us. Uh, so I already called item seventeen, P two one dash one three nine. Uh, I'll also call item eighteen as case P two one dash zero eight six is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances. Once again, the address is one fifteen Jersey City Boulevard and sixty-five to one-on-one Philip Street.
Thank you. And, uh, you know, for the record, it's Charles Harrington and Carl Foley on behalf of the applicant Site Tech City. Um, I do note, uh, for the record that we did provide notices for, for both the subdivision and the site plan, uh, separately. So there are two sets of notices that were, um, filed with, in connection with these applications.
Thank you, Council. Uh, Chairman, I am receipt affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to both applications. I do find them both in order. So what I'd like to do is for purposes of trying to keep the record clean. The first case, which is the preliminary and final major subdivision and is under case P two one dash one three nine. We're gonna mark that notice as A one for the record. And then the preliminary and final major site plan application, which is case P two one dash zero eight six. We're gonna mark that notice as A two for the record. And again, they all appear to be in order in jurisdictions proper before the board chairman.
Okay, thank you, Council.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess maybe before I begin, uh, if I could ask that, um, the following be promoted as well. Um, Paul Hoffman, Sony David, Eric Vermilion, Ed Shim, John Garing, and Sean Moronsky.
Okay, I lost the last two. So Sean Moronsky.
Moronsky. Did you get John Garing and Ed Shim? Yes, you got Ed.
All right, we got John. Is that everyone?
I think we have, yeah, we got John, we got Ed. Yeah, I believe that's everybody. Sean's up here. Yep. Great, thank you. So, um, just, uh, for the benefit of the board's knowledge, uh, the subdivision before you tonight, we, we are proposing to create four lots. Um, so the reason it's, it's being presented as a major subdivision is because the, this property was subdivided within the last five years, uh, as a minor subdivision. So if you're gonna resubdivide, uh, property uh, in Jersey City within five years, it is automatically deemed a major subdivision. So, um, that is before you, uh, to create four lots that will be used as development lots for the Site Tech City, uh, campus and project. So we're, we're very excited to present this tonight. Uh, this is, uh, the first component of the Site Tech City, uh, project. I'm sure the board has heard about it. It has been, I, uh, been, been working towards this moment for at least, uh, four or five years. Uh, Site Tech City, uh, is the designated redeveloper, uh, of this overall campus and overall project, which will include, uh, what's before you tonight, the Edgeworks, uh, building, which is a, a, um, science and technology facility, uh, with other components that we'll, we'll explain as part of, uh, this presentation. It eventually, uh, it will have, uh, also a school, um, uh, as part of it as well as as a residential component. Those are not part of tonight's, uh, presentation. It, it is limited to the Edgeworks, uh, portion and, uh, the, an interim, uh, parking lot is being proposed and requested, uh, by this board for a three-year period from the date of, of the CEO of the building, provided it is approved. Now, that, again, we will speak to that as to why we're asking for the interim parking lot, uh, because of, you know, proposed events there. Uh, and it is located on the southern, uh, portion of, of the project, uh, which is not, uh, slated for any development at this point in time. Um, the project, uh, is requesting, uh, a few deviations. Uh, they are mostly related to the signage, the number of the signs, the size of the signs. Uh, we also are asking, uh, permission for an LED, uh, uh, screen, um, as part of the, the project and architecture, if you will. Uh, and then going back to that interim parking lot, we are requesting a deviation to, to, um, uh, grant relief uh, to have more than the maximum parking that is permitted here. Uh, so that is, you know, something that you don't normally see where people are looking for parking variances on the other side where they're, they, they have less than required. We are asking for more. Um, and, and that, that kind of ties into the interim parking lot. Um, so today or tonight before you is, is the Edgeworks building. Um, it's the eight-story building. I'm not gonna steal the thunder of, of, uh, my other professionals here, but, uh, in, in sure, it's an eight-story building that's, uh, about a hundred and sixteen feet in height and a hundred and twenty thousand plus square feet. Uh, it's going to be a mix of uses focusing on site tech concepts, uh, the science and technology uses. It's very exciting. It's, it's going to be associated with, you know, Paul Hoffman is, is our, our first witness tonight. Paul has been living and breathing with this for, for five years at least. Um, he is the Executive Director of the Liberty Science Center. Um, and this is, this is really, you know, a concept that, that he and others, uh, at the Science Center and, and a lot of benefactors have come together, uh, with this, this great, we, we think it's a great concept. Um, it is, uh, overall, um, the subdivision, it's, uh, it's twelve point five-three acres. This, this land was transferred by the city to the JCR A and to Site Tech City, which is a nonprofit entity. Um, and part of it was also, uh, transferred from the JCMUA to the JCR A to, to, uh, my clients. So this has been, you know, a coordination of many, many government agencies and, and, uh, and the Science Center, and, uh, we're excited to, to present that. And with that, uh, I'm gonna get out of the way and have, uh, Mr. Hoffman, if I could, I'd like him to present an overview to the board. And then we'll get into the nuts and bolts of the project.
Okay, thank you, Council. And, uh, Mr. Hoffman's just being, uh, brought up as a, a fact witness, not an expert?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Hi Paul, let me just swear you in before you go, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
My name is Paul Hoffman, P A U L H O double F M A N.
Thank you.
Paul, before you, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, before you begin, Paul, if you, if you could give the board the benefit of, of your position with the Science Center and how you're connected with this project.
I'm the President and CEO of Liberty Science Center and Site Tech City.
And, and for the record, Liberty Science Center, uh, Corp is the sole member of the Site Tech City entity, is that correct?
It is. Site Tech City is a nonprofit, um, set up as an LLC with one member, and that's Liberty Science Center.
Which is also a nonprofit entity, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so it tells if you, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you had a question or comment for Mr. Hoffman?
Um, I wanted to compliment, uh, compliment on his background.
I work at a science center, you know.
I, I was gonna say that it was shocking, but, you know, I don't know if the pun is, uh,
But I'm.
Appropriate. All right, go ahead, guys.
Thank you very much. Now, this is a really exciting project that so many folks have worked on, and it's a pleasure, Commissioners and Chairman, to, uh, come before you today. The goal of Site Tech City is to launch and grow science and technology companies. So to form them, to foster them, to, uh, it's a portfolio model. We want companies that are doing bleeding-edge work. By bleeding-edge, meaning taking a chance on a new idea. And some of these companies will make it, hopefully more than the average incubator. That's our intention. And the filter on being there is whatever you do, if it's successful, is gonna radically change the world for the better. I mean, we hope that some of these companies will improve the life, not just for people in Jersey City, but for New Jersey, the United States, and the world. And that's our goal. It's a bold goal, but we have the support now of so many partners that want to make this happen. Um, with the Sheba Medical Center in Israel, we just announced as our first innovation partner when we broke ground on October twenty-second. They are the Mayo Clinic of Israel. They're the largest health uh, system and hospital in the Middle East. Uh, many of the COVID protocols we use at American hospitals were developed there. And they'll be setting up a Hospital of the Future Simulation Center where you can see what the future of healthcare is going to look like, what digital health and home health will look like, which will affect all of our lives, but particularly help people in underserved communities who might not have medical specialists in their neighborhood, might not have childcare, be able to get from work to medical specialists. So we really want to radically change. We really want to radically change the world, and that's the idea of this project. And also to reimagine grade school, science education by putting a school there. You know, if we are successful, we hope that this project will. You know, be known internationally. We want you to be able to come there if you're a consumer or a business. And see what the near-term future holds. And that's what Sheba is going to do for us by by building, you know, the emergency room in the future, the ICU of the future. Not where you go and get treated as a patient, but you'll see what that looks like. And we're looking for partners in the energy sector, other sectors that are important to our collective future on the planet. And. With that, I would love some of our professionals to show you the project.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Okay, great. Then I want to move on to Sony David is is going to take you through the subdivision in in the site plan. For the board.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Sony. Let me just swear in.
Yep.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
My name is Sony David, S O N Y D A V I D.
Thank you.
Mr. David, good evening. Your license card tonight in the state of New Jersey? It is. Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, Sony, if you could walk, walk us through the subdivision and then the site plan.
Yeah, sure thing. I was actually going to start with just the existing conditions. So what I've I've pulled up here is an aerial exhibit showing an aerial map of the overall site. If you'd like, I could mark this as as an exhibit if that's helpful.
Yeah, why don't we mark that as A three? Do we have additional slides that you're going to refer to that we can mark them cumulatively as A three or?
Yeah, so so this is a pack of five drawings, some of which have been submitted as part of the site plan application. We can, if it's possible, just doing the entire PDF set of five drawings as A three would be, would be great.
Yeah, let's mark them as A three, and then let's identify them individually. I'll ask that you submit them. After the presentation, so we have them in in our files. And Mr. Harrington. We're not seeing the screen yet, so Mr. David, have you been given permission to share the screen? There we go. Thank you.
Right. Yes. Are you able to see it? Okay, good. So so this is just describing the existing conditions, just to orient everyone. North is pointing towards the top of the sheet, so as I refer to north, it'll be referring to the top of the all the sheets that I'm going to be going through in the in the deck over here. And just some notable features, you have Liberty Science Center just to the east of the project site. And you have Liberty State Park located just south of the site. And just getting into the actual project site itself, the SciTech City site is approximately twelve and a half acres. Bound by New Jersey Turnpike to the north. Jersey City Boulevard to the east. Phillips Street to the south and to the west. And the project site is identified as block two, one, five, zero, four. Lots four point oh, one, five, six, and seven. And as you can see, it's currently occupied by the abandoned Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority's sedimentation tanks. Which is the large concrete structure in the center of the site. You have an abandoned water tank over in the location closest to Jersey City Boulevard. A vacant one-story building, which is pretty small. And the remainder of the site is vacant lot with tightly packed gravel and overgrown vegetated areas. The site topography is mildly sloped with existing surface elevations from elevation twenty-three. In the northeastern corner of the property to elevation eight at the southeastern portion, corner of the property. And the slopes vary within the site from anywhere around one and a half percent to five percent. And the site is partially located within the hundred-year floodplain, which is at elevation twelve. Next, I'd like to move on to the subdivision plan. So. This drawing is C B dash one oh one titled Major Subdivision Plan.
And this would be, I'm sorry, this would be sheet two of your deck?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's dated seven October two thousand twenty-one. And so as Chuck had mentioned, the application also includes a major subdivision component to the plan. The property is proposed to be subdivided into four lots. I've color-coded these lots just to make it a little bit easier to describe. Moving from left to right, as shown in red in the westernmost lot. This is the interim parking lot. That's going to accommodate that in the proposed conditions. In orange is shown is the future Liberty High School lot. Just below there, you have in blue, the future residential development lot. And finally, and finally, in green is the Edgeworks Building Lot.
Is Sony, just for the record. The future Liberty High School site, we will be providing the necessary easements to provide access to the rights of way, correct?
Correct. We're going to be providing not only access, but utility easements as well. That are going to be accessed, accessed off of Philip Street as well as Jersey City Boulevard. And this is going to be moving on to describing the proposed conditions. This is sheet three. Titled Site Plan Rendering and dated sixth December two thousand twenty-one. The project is located in the Science and Technology District in the Liberty Harbor Redevelopment Plan. The proposed improvements include. The new Edgeworks Building, which is an eight-story building with an eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-seven square foot footprint. Which includes new research and development, office, restaurant space and conference space. Directly adjacent to that, to the west, is the new open plaza area. And just north of the plaza, there's a enclosed pavilion with bathrooms. You have a covered bicycle storage area in the center. And then an enclosed utility space housing the transformer and emergency generator. In the rear of the building, you have the proposed loading operations for the Edgeworks Building. Located off the access drive just off of Jersey City Boulevard. And directly adjacent to the building is the Accraid Parking Lot. There's thirty-six parking spaces within this Accraid Parking Lot area. And directly adjacent to the building, you have an additional eight totaling forty-four parking spaces to service the Edgeworks Building. This also includes four ADA parking spaces as well as three electrical vehicle charging spaces. The site work improvements also include a fifteen-foot wide central peaver walkway to connect the overall site. As well as significant landscape improvements throughout the site. Along with new lighting consisting of new light poles, bollards, and building-mounted lights. And flanking the walkway, you have the future residential lot to the south. And the future school lot to the north, both of which will be part of separate site plan applications, as Chuck mentioned. And you also notice that through the school lot, there is a future loop road connection, which is intended for trucks and emergency vehicle circulation. And then finally, on the western edge is the interim parking lot. This includes two hundred and twenty-one parking spaces. It consists of a stone surface to be used to really accommodate more infrequent. Larger gatherings for for the plaza space or for conferences. And then access for the site is provided off of a driveway entrance off of Philip Street. As well as an a driveway access off of Jersey City Boulevard.
And Sony, could you just speak to how many parking spaces we have closer to the building?
Yeah, that's correct. We have, we have forty-four total parking spaces closer to the building. Thirty-six are located here. Eight directly adjacent to the building. And now moving on to the stormwater design. This drawing is sheet four of five. It's titled C U one hundred. Overall Drainage and Utility Plan. And and it was last revised on October eighth, two thousand twenty-one. So this plan describes the existing conditions as well as a proposed drainage design. Just touching upon the existing, the the existing stormwater runoff is conveyed via sheet flow from the site. Into existing catch basins in the existing adjacent roadways, both within Philip Street as well as in Jersey City Boulevard. And ultimately gets collected and conveyed through the existing catch basins on those roadways. And into the existing thirty-three-inch stormwater pipe, which is in Philip Street. Now, the proposed development decreases the impervious coverage by point eighteen acres. Through the inclusion of new landscaping and street trees to reduce not only the peak stormwater runoff rates. But also the volume from the existing conditions, which means less runoff ends up into the existing storm sewer system that's fronting the road. The proposed development also maintains the same drainage patterns as the existing conditions. And we have been coordinating with J C M U A from the start of the project. And have coordinated the stormwater approach as well as where the connection points are into the existing thirty-three-inch dedicated storms to rely within Philip Street. The proposed stormwater conveyance piping is indicated in blue on this plan. And the proposed stormwater management design complies with not only J C M U A, but also N J D E P stormwater regulations. Similar to the storm design. We have also coordinated closely with J C M U A on the sanitary and water design. And this is sheet five. It's the same title and date. I just have a different indication of of the. The sanitary line on this plan. So the new Edgeworks Building has a new eight-inch fire and domestic water service laterals. Which connect to the existing twenty-inch water main in Jersey City Boulevard. There's a new twelve-inch sanitary lateral shown in green, which services the Edgeworks Building. And also provides a connection point to J C M U A's existing sixty-six-inch sanitary sewer interceptor. Which is located within the center of the project site. And the proposed gas, electric, and telecom services for the Edgeworks Building are also accommodated through laterals. Connect to the existing services on Jersey City Boulevard as well as as shown in this portion of the site. And that's it. And Chuck, is there any other, any other questions or anything else you have?
Yeah, just for the benefit of the board, we we did receive a review comment letter from Jersey City Engineer. Engineers dated December third, twenty twenty-one. You you were able to review that, correct?
That's correct.
And is there anything there within that letter that. You don't believe you can further address with the engineering department to their, you know, for their review and satisfaction?
No, I think we'll be able to to coordinate with them and make sure that all their concerns are addressed. And and make sure that we resolve the issues that they've identified on in their comment letter.
And in fact, you've already had a conversation with Ms. Wang concerning this letter to date?
Yes, correct. And and one of the things that we did discuss, just as an example, is the is the inclusion of a sidewalk. Along the entire property frontage. We did have that discussion and and, you know. Similar to all the other items that we discussed, she mentioned that we are able to to resolve that and address that issue. And the resolution for that really was to to provide a phasing plan that shows how the. The sidewalk and connections will be made within the various phases. And one example of that, as I'm showing here, is we currently show. Along the portion of the site that's that's being proposed here before the board today. The Edgeworks Building, we have sidewalks shown along the frontage where my cursor is currently pointing. And there is a portion of that which is not shown because that's part of the residential component. Which will be part of a separate application and built at that time when that residence development is being built. And so just to clarify, you know, she she understood that the that the timing. Of the inclusion of the sidewalk may may vary based on the the timing of the the different developments as they come online. But understood that that we would be, you know, providing that sidewalk there to accommodate, you know, future future uses as they come online.
So we would be continuing to to work with the engineering department to address these comments and and or comply with them, correct?
That's correct.
Chair, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for Mr. David. I don't know if you you want to. Save questions for the end or or move on to the architecture?
No, let's um, let's. Do questions on, you know, as someone's up. Just two quick ones, Mr. David.
Sure.
The eight-inch line that's coming in, you said it was a fire line. Is that combined domestic and fire, or is that just fire?
So it's an eight-inch, an eight-inch domestic line and an eight-inch fire line, two separate lines that would be coming in?
Okay, two separate lines. And those are just feeding. The Edgeworks Property, correct? They're not for the the other proposed future developments?
Yeah, that's that's correct. It's just for the Edgeworks.
Okay. All right. Yeah, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. The proposed eight-story building. And the interim parking lot. Is the interim parking lot going to be designed and built at the same time as the proposed? A story building? And if that is so. The walkway that goes through, because the other two properties are future. Developments. Where will, will there be safe? Access of walkways? Using the edge of park.
Yeah, and so to answer your first question, they would be constructed at the same time. So you you would have the the construction of the building as well as the interim parking lot. In addition to the walkways you mentioned. The purpose of the the interim parking lot is to be used more frequently. You know, for events, events within the plaza, larger events within the plaza area and things of that nature. And so it's, it wouldn't be used on a daily basis and and certainly anything that would be accommodated. During the construction of either the school or residences would have to consider. The protection of and and safe passage of any pedestrians walking through that space. With the understanding that, again, it will be used more infrequently. You know, while while the construction is ongoing, you know, we don't anticipate that this would be filled on a daily basis, but again.
Good. I love what I'm seeing here. This is like really great, this project. But if that is so, and this is for special events and. That might be happening at the proposed building. Some of these events will be done. Assuming in the evening, maybe some of them. What would any way of preventing people to be walked in at the lot? Instead of coming down the center onto Philip Street. I drive that every night, so it can be very hard to see people. And there's always people walking on that road, and it's very. And some people can't drive very fast on that. Would there be anything that you could prevent people from? Or is there going to be a walkway there too for them?
Correct. So so the walkway does extend with a crosswalk into the interim parking lot. You do have quite a bit of vegetation and and shrubbery and the frontage of the parking lot. And and there's also a striped area to allow people to come to this entrance and have gates that. That'll ask them to access it and safely kind of go within the center of the site. Yes, correct.
Not not to stop them from walking into Philip Street.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say that 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 there there, we do have, we do have basically gates at the entrances for each of this, but I was saying that the vegetation and and. And other planting and things like that would.
Yeah, that would stop them from coming out of the car. But let's say if I walked over to. Jersey City Boulevard, I will. But that's over there, yeah. So talking over here by the inch of parking. I come out of there. There will be no walkways here on Philip Street.
On on Philip Street, no, there there will not be at at this point in time. Yeah, it's it's going to be the main central walkway is the only thing that's proposed. To direct people more towards the center of the site, which is really that central walkway that that ties in, you know, the connection for all the developments within the property.
Okay, I see what you're saying. That's all I have for now.
All right, thanks, Ed. But Mr. David, there is going to be a sidewalk constructed along Philip at that parking lot, correct?
So at at this point, we did not have a sidewalk shown here. It's just the existing vegetation. We did have. Tie-in points to allow the the entrances to be constructed. But whatever ultimate future use ends up being within this space, you know, after that interim use is completed. Is really when when, you know, any kind of envisioning of a sidewalk or finished space within within that place would make sense.
Okay, all right. So we're, you know, we're just not discussing this.
Okay, all right. So we're, you know, we're just not discussing a sidewalk tonight, correct?
Mr. David, isn't that is one of the issues that I believe was raised by the engineering department that that we will have further discussions about. Is that correct?
Yeah, that that is. And, 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 you know, we did discuss that as future developments come online in the future. That's really the timing of when, you know, it would make sense to add the sidewalk. The intention is to add it, but only at that time so that it's clearly designed and. Defined as part of that development.
Okay, thank you, Mr. David. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, just I guess this is the time for the record, I'm going to have to exit the meeting.
All right, you got it, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone have a great meeting. Thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
Thank you. You too. Bye bye.
All right, anybody else for Mr. David?
Mr. David, I just want to be clear then, the proposed eight story. Edworks building is part of the site plan application. The interim parking. Is part of the site plan application. The future loop road connection. Is that part of the application at this point or no? Because that's a future design element.
Correct. It's not part of the application. That's a future design element.
But that walkway connecting the interim parking to the eight story building is part of the site plan application.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. David.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'm going to move on to our architecture now. We're only going to have one person speaking, but I am going to bring up. Three individuals because I have John Gering is the licensed New Jersey architect. Ed Shim is the project architect that works with John at H L W. And Eric Vermillion is our design architect from Concrete now. And so we're going to have Eric present if that's okay. But I'd like to have all three, you know, sworn in and and qualify for the, you know, the extent of their presentations.
All right, I have the three gentlemen, if you could raise your right hands and you swear that any testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. And then Ed, Eric, John, if you could spell your names for me on the record and Ed, you're muted.
John Gearing, G E R I N G.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ed, go ahead.
Edward Shim, S H I M, as in Mary.
And Eric Jan Vermelen, E R I K J A N, and then Vermelen is V E R M E U L E N.
Thank you.
Okay, for the record, Mr. Gering, you have been qualified in the past before this board and you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you are the licensed architect in charge of this project. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And Mr. Garing, that license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks. You're qualified.
Okay, and then Mr. Shim, just for the record, you have been working as the project architect in conjunction with Mr. Garing. Is that correct? So, yeah, Mr. Mr. Shim is here to answer any technical questions as well as Mr. Garing, but then I'd offer. Eric Vermillion is going to present the project. Eric, maybe if you could just give the board a little bit of benefit of your background as the design architect here.
Sure, thank you. So, yeah, I'm partner and head of architecture over. Architecture and interior design firm based in Amsterdam in Europe. A lot of our work is abroad. In Jersey, we have been responsible also together with H L W for the Urbey Tower. On Harper's Hill Plaza, for instance. So we know how to work together with a strong local teams, giving us the opportunity to make. Great architectural designs and have the local knowledge of a team like H L W to work on, to make sure that everything we come up with also gets executed. In the right manner, obviously. So thanks again for being in front of.
Mr. Harrington, is it fair to say that both Eric and Ed are working under the supervision and direction of John? And they'll be providing the architectural detail of the plan under his supervision?
That is correct. Thank you.
So Chairman, I would accept them as experts in the field working under the license of Mr. Garing and under his supervision. And allow them to provide that testimony this evening.
Absolutely. Yes, we've done done similar in the past. So absolutely.
Okay, Eric, I believe you have a slide deck as well that you want to use in conjunction with your presentation? And if we're, if we could mark this as A four. And Eric, if you could describe the sheets as as you walk through them and how many sheets are part of this deck?
Good question. Roughly twenty-eight.
All right, so let's mark those as A four. Council, perhaps we can go right to. I assume the architecture that we're going to focus on is the Edworks structure?
That's correct. That is the only architecture that's part of it.
Why don't we get, why don't we cut right to the chase and get to that building and?
Definitely will do. Are you, are you able to see my screen?
We are. Yes, we can.
So this is the Edworks building here, the eight story building on the, let's say, the the northern northeast end of the. The full development and the property. And then just for reference, the Liberty Science Center is a little bit more here to the right. To Paul's words, the whole SciTech city development and also the Edworks buildings is one, let's say, beehive of science-related activities. Whether there are professionals working in the field, whether there are young people that are interested in it or learning about it, whether it are just people that are interested in it. Or whether people that are coming from outside and having a conference here, we're going to mingle and mix them within on our property and within our building. And get them connected and foster that interaction and have them share ideas. In order to bring, you know, like the, to make SciTech city actually. Beehive and a top class science-related area. So this is the ground floor plan of that Edworks building, which is a, it has different functionalities in it, but the ground floor is very. Open also to the public. We have an exhibition space. We tend to call it the the showcase lab. Where we have live large three D printing machines is one of the ideas that people that are working in the building are actually making and fabricating. On this very visual and open spot which has, you know, large glass facades towards Jersey City Boulevard. And Philip Street, so it's very visual to the people. We have a restaurant which is open to the public for from early morning until the end of the evening. It has a cafe component into it. That means that you can get a cup of coffee, but you can go there for dinner as well. It has outdoor seating facilities that is overlooking the events plaza. So it also serves the plaza when there's an event going on. On the plaza as well. And then in the middle, we have the entrance lobby, which is the entrance to all the different functions that are within this building. It's not just an empty hallway, but it already has seating facilities, some working facilities, some spaces where people already can meet and interact. And it has doors that directly enter into the restaurant, into the exhibition hall. So the life of science already starts, you know, on the plaza and in the entry lobby. To be very open and inviting to the to the people. Then on this side, it's more of the loading area that also Sony pointed out. And we have the elevators that run up into the building, obviously. And then here, right in the middle, we have escalators and stairs that leads up to the second floor. Where we have our conference facility. It's a multi-purpose hall in a way. We have one large five hundred square foot ballroom. And we have a little bit of a smaller assembly hall. That can, each of them can be divided into smaller rooms as well. So we really want to make sure that we can house all kinds of different groups. And people for different types of activities, whether they are lectures, whether they are large galas, whether they are. More large exhibitions or other events going on. One of the opportunities is that we can open up all doors. And turn this into an eleven thousand square foot exhibition hall. So it really serves different purposes to attract a lot of, you know, like different people from all around the nation. But also specifically, of course, the locals, but everything is obviously related to. To science and has this connection also to the Liberty Science Center. When we go up into the building, then we have on top of the 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 larger conference rooms, we have a conference center with a series of smaller. Meeting rooms and boardrooms. And again, possibilities to share spaces or not. We have a small media center here in the media screening room in the middle. We have breakout zones. And this is again all to to provide the facilities for people, smaller groups, larger groups. To be able to use our accommodation and to be able to meet other people in the field of science and interact and share ideas. And then as of the fifth floor up to the eighth floor, we have our Edworks facilities, which is. Working areas, it's divided into studios. Smaller studios, larger studios, spaces that can be combined as well. So it really gives the the opportunity also for for starters in the market. That they can grow within our building, become larger or smaller. We have co-working desks in open areas that sit in the middle of the building. And then we have also communal equipment rooms and technology labs. So that means that if smaller companies can also use. These, you know, communal equipments, they don't have to buy expensive equipment themselves. They can rent it here within the building. So with not a lot of money, they can already start, you know, and grow the company in here. While at the same time. We hope that larger companies and established companies will be in this building as well, and they can share knowledge and share creative ideas, et cetera. This is a very open environment, office environment as well. We have always connecting stairs between the floors. This is a large seating stair. That runs from floor five to floor six. People can sit on it. You can use it to go one floor up. You can use it for small. Talks and and conferences as well. And it also gives us voids within the building that brings in a lot of daylight deep into the building. And that, you know, further expresses the interaction that we want to create between the different floors and with that between the different people. We're going one floor up to the seventh floor. Again, the same concept, studio spaces, communal equipment rooms here in the back of the building. Open office spaces with desks that people can rent, smaller desk, larger spaces, et cetera. All the way up to the eighth floor on three out of the four floors of the studios and the the work areas, we also have outdoor spaces. Same context here also for the conference area. So there's plenty of, you know, breakout spaces for people to step outside. And then we have some planted seated areas on terraces and decks. And of course, with, you know, the great views towards the city and the and the area. And then on the roof, some M E P equipment, large skylights, again, to bring daylight deep into the building. And the rest of the roof are filled with solar panels, like more of these, you know, like science-related technologies obviously integrated already in this building. So even though it's just one building, you know, it houses different types of functions that we want to bring together so that it also expressed into. The architecture of the building itself. So you can see it's a collage of different windows, collage of different materials. And actually, I will just jump directly into the rendered images because that gives a much better impression of that. So this is a an aerial view. So this would be the Edworks building. This is the current Liberty Science Center. Here north of us. You can see that the Edworks building itself, it's not just a straight, simple building, but it kind of consists out of different volumes. It has. Diversity in its massing to express all the different functions that are happening within the building. And it has this connection to the event plaza with the restaurant, with the with the terraces and the seating in front of it. And of course, with all the landscape that kind of, you know, gets embedded around our building. To to kind of embed our building and that that outdoor life gets extended onto the different terraces that sit, you know, on different levels on our building. This is a view from the corner from Jersey City Boulevard. So this will be on the right Jersey City Boulevard. I have Philip Street kind of in my neck. I have the in my back, the Liberty State Park. So you can see it's very open and active on the ground floor. It already starts with the plaza in front where we have different seating facilities. When we see, we want to maybe integrate science-related art already into the into the area as well. And then we have this open building with the exhibition space very visible on this corner here. We have the. The entrance here on the ground floor or in the middle of the building. And then we have the restaurant here that is facing towards the. The events plaza. And then on the second floor, we have our conference area. One of the, you know, really attractors that we want to create are are conference areas that have views. Most conference areas are stuffed down somewhere in the basement of a building, but we really want to make use of the beautiful environment. And then we have the views over the park, et cetera. And so the ballroom has these large windows. Obviously, we can all black it out when needed, but you know, for other types of functions, we can open it up. And we have the views, including a balcony towards the park. You can see that the inside of the whole ballroom is very warm, clearly warm wood. We do the same with the balconies. So we bring some of the warm life that's happening inside of the building to the exterior as well. Then we have a large LED screen integrated into the architecture as well. So it's not just applied on it, but it's, you know, it's it's integral to the architecture. It gets teamed with content that's really related to science. And it tries to communicate to towards the people, obviously, but also towards the Liberty Science Center. Because we have such a strong connection with the museum and also in terms of programming, there's a lot of connection between, you know, the Liberty Science Center and everything that's happening here on. SciTech city. And then once you go up in the building, you can see that, you know, it's again very transparent, getting a lot of daylight into the building. But also we didn't want to make a very flat facade, so we have caps on the window frames. There's that, there's veils in the windows, et cetera. So we tried to pay a lot of attention to the detailing of the of the whole architectural expression of the building. Same same counts for the lighting. So we have carefully designed lighting integrated into the building as well. Frittered pieces of glass have some uplights, for instance, here in the upper parts. Obviously, on the ground floor, you know, we make sure that the ceiling is lit enough so that you you also in in dawn, you know, you can see. You know, the activity that are happening within the building as well. This will be kind of the front view straight shot from Philip Street. Right here in the middle is the entrance. On the right-hand side here, the exhibition space on the left here is the restaurant towards the events plaza. And as you can see here in the materiality is that, look, we didn't want to make, you know, like all of the same materials as well. So again, same as with the massing. Also in the materiality of the architecture, we just wanted to express all the different functions that are happening within the building. So this is. True. So this will be a view from the events plaza. We have that. Small pavilion here that's clad in green tiles. So it blends in to the into the the nature as well. That houses the the covered bike parking and restroom facilities for the plaza. Then down here would be the restaurant opening up towards the plaza, obviously. And then, you know, one part of the conference area. And then we, the assembly hall would be in this white box, again, windows towards the plaza. To give a different experience of meeting as well. A nighttime view, again, incorporating the different, you know, lighting strategies to make sure that this is also an interesting building in evening hours. And then this would be the view from Jersey City Boulevard. And this is the northwest facade. It's a little bit more solid. We have different functions in here, name mostly the equipment rooms. So they need a little bit less of glass. In there, but we still incorporated, you know, pieces of of windows as well on a stucco, a concrete stucco. Facade. So this is more of a solid piece where the rest of the building is much more transparent. In its materiality, but you can already see that in the in the renders, I'm not going, getting too much into detail, but we want to make sure. The different functions that are happening within the building are also expressed into the different materiality, but at the same time, we didn't, you know, want to make it too crazy. So that there's some color tones in there, there's some wood in there, and there's some different types of materials, materiality ranging from. Concrete stucco into more, you know, metal profiled panels as well. And then we pay a lot of attention to the glass and which has transparent parts as well as fitted glass parts as well. So, yeah, this is the building in a nutshell.
Any questions for Eric or?
The only question I do have, I don't see any street lighting along the. Along the Jersey, Jersey City of frontage. Is there any? Is there any? Is are there sidewalks along there?
There are both Sony.
Yeah, there there are both sidewalks and street lighting all along the Jersey City Boulevard frontage.
Okay. Um, and then the only other question I have, the. Um, the western-facing facade over the plaza, is there a? Um. Is there a roof deck that faces that side as well? All the way up it.
Yeah, so there's this function here, and there's a balcony here in the uh from the assembly hall, there's a. A balcony that that faces the uh the plaza as well.
Okay, but there's nothing at the top of the building, correct?
Uh, no. So here, the top of the building, that that's why we have so uh solar panels.
Okay, gotcha. Um.
So the roof deck is on the, is that the fourth floor as well as on the second floor? There's a terrace?
Yeah, yeah. So so we have, we have balconies on the second floor. So there would be this guy here and then this guy here. They are related to to the large um.
Right.
Conference halls. Then there's a one balcony, no, sorry, one terrace here on the uh on the fourth floor.
Fourth floor.
Then there's one on the fifth floor up here. And then there's one on the eighth floor.
Okay, so that's the fifth floor on the. Front portion of the building in the in the illustration, the fourth floor in the background portion.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Um, okay, those are my questions. Anybody else?
Chairman, what's the symbol?
I don't know. I didn't draw it, Santa.
The symbol is to show that all the parts of the project are are interconnected. Um. The students at the school, the high school students will be doing mentorships and internships and all the companies will require that of them. Uh, it it's it's really to symbolize that we're trying to build a a whole community.
Do we credit the creator of the symbol? I think it's awesome. I thought maybe there was something more to it. I think that's a great explanation.
Well, it started as the original path for the project. And then that was too crazy. Uh, so but but we kept it because people liked it. Okay, it has a real, you know, it has a sort of molecular and planetary orbit element to it. Also, which uh relates to science, of course.
I thought maybe I just wasn't smart enough to know what it was, but I feel better about the fact that.
Okay, anybody else? Any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Harrington, I don't know if we need more testimony based on the nature of the application. I'll defer to you and the chairman on that.
Well, I I understand that. I mean, I'd prefer to have uh just some testimony on the requested variances. Because of the signage, the number of it and uh the parking and it just don't answer bicycle stuff. We uh. If if you just bear with us for, you know, to to have Sean go go through that uh briefly.
Um, counsel, I assume we're gonna talk about the parking lot at that point?
That's right.
Okay, we say you have a question about the material on the parking lot, the stone. And um, okay, I'll wait until that's appropriate then.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm just gonna bring up Sean Moronski uh and for the record, our traffic engineer is also here. I'm not planning on bringing him up who's done the report, which is part of the record, but with that said, uh Sean, if you could uh. Uh, be sworn in.
Okay. You swear in your testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
First name Sean S E A N Moronski, M O R O N S K I.
Thank you.
And Sean, you've been qualified before this board in the past, is that correct?
I have.
And and your license is uh current?
It is.
Okay.
Okay, you beat me to it, counsel. You're qualified.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, so Sean, you you know, if you could briefly go through the requested variances for the benefit of the board.
Sure, um, and I will follow um the list as it is outlined in your planner's memorandum dated December third. Um, first, I'll talk about the maximum number of signs. Two is the maximum permitted. We're proposing seventeen. As the previous testimony talked about, the signs have different uh purposes. For example, um, the logo sign, which uh Mr. Hoffman just talked about, the interconnectivity, part of the branding of the site. And various points of the building, um, having SciTech City on the site and also. Um, the Gorini Innovation Campus as well, part of the broader identification. You come down the street level, you have um the edgework sign at the door and then the restaurant signs at the door and the. And the street address also for the street level identification as well. And then the LED screen, which is built into um. The design and the facade and it serves as a function to communicate um. The activities and the purposes of SciTech City and Edgework. And as was noted, the screen is focused toward the Liberty Science Center itself. Um, it's not going, it's not going to have any off-site advertising. It is strictly for the purpose of communicating the activities that go on and the way it's designed. Um, and the plans, um, it was clear designed to clearly communicate a message up to seven hundred and fifty feet away. The Liberty Science Center door is about seven hundred and thirty-five feet away. So it is a clear, narrow focus. And the the programming is from that screen is related to the purposes of the site only. Um. Question of the maximum sign area. So six of the signs exceed ten percent of the facade area. I talked about the liberties uh the 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 screen in terms of its purpose. The other signs are varying sizes, again, whether it's the logo sign or the larger SciTech City signs to more broadly identify. The site, um, the nature of SciTech City and Edgework, much like you have the signage for Liberty Science Center as well. The idea of a destination that people coming and approaching. And um to help um further its brand identity in the context of the overall building design. Question about illuminated signs toward Liberty State Park. The signs on the south side of the building, which is. Mainly what's facing Liberty State Park, as was noted in the architectural plans. They're backlit. It's a very soft lighting. It's integrated into the overall building design. Um, the the intensity of the lighting is minimal enough to just be identified. But not in terms of distracting from the the environment of the nearby park. And the LED screen is oriented toward the east and as its its own unique um audience, as we noted. With regards to the maximum parking spaces, uh, the parking area is in interim use. Um. Its purpose is being used for infrequent large events, such as conferences or gatherings that may occur in the plaza space. Um, the redevelopment plan does allow for a ratio of office and other spaces to be averaged in the entire. Redevelopment area. And this is going to be revisited when you have future redevelopment on the site, the continuing phases. As we go forward. So I don't believe, given the interim use of the site, that the additional parking represents an overdevelopment. And as was previously addressed, it will be connected with the building, with the corridor on the property, the pedestrian corridor for safe access. There goes the question, the bicycle parking spaces. Um, these are not entirely indoors with proposed. Shell- sheltered storage. Um, it offers shelter in the event of inclement weather. The indoor parking is practically difficult to manage, given the nature of the facility use and the transient nature of site visitors. So we believe, and as is noted in your planner's memorandum, um, that um the proposed um. Sheltering for bicycle parking spaces as as in the plans um is appropriate. Um, these variances further several purposes, the municipal land use law, including promoting the general welfare. And providing a variety of uses um according to respective environmental requirements to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. Most notably in terms of promoting science and technology. Uh, the negative criteria, there's no substantial impact to the public good. The additional parking is interim over three years and it's limited to special events. The LED screen is intended for the Liberty Science Center audience and to communicate the happenings. SciTech City and Edgework and the relationship between the two entities. The signage is integrated um into the design of the building. Um. The smaller street-level signage serves the purpose of guiding visitors. And there's no substantial impact from the signage i- in terms of surrounding land uses, particularly Liberty State Park. There's no substantial um impact on the redevelopment plan. We further several of the goals of redevelopment plan. Number two. Um, the improvement of the functional and physical layout of the project area contemplated for new development. Uh, number six, the creation of employment and expansion of the city's tourism sector. The idea that SciTech City Edgework is going to be a destination. And finally, goal number eleven, the creation of multi-function science and technology district to promote learning and innovation. The Edgework Building with the proposed interim parking with the signage package, including the LED screen. As the first stage of the future science and technology district that furthers this redevelopment plan purpose. So for the reasons that I've outlined, I I do request um that you request um that you uh grant the relief that we've requested. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moronski. Um. I I have no questions for Mr. Moronski, but I I actually do have a couple of questions that uh. I should have backtracked uh on the parking. Uh, so while we have Mr. Moronski up, uh, any questions? Anybody? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, counsel, two of these I probably can direct towards you. Uh, you're looking for a three-year interim use for parking from the date of CO. Uh, can we change that to the date of TCO?
Edit. That would be acceptable, yes.
Okay, um. And then the only other question that I could direct to you probably. Uh, what are the hours on the LED sign that faces the Science Center facing east? Can we limit those to the hours of operation of both? The Edgework's property and the Liberty Science Center?
There are, there are no proposed limitation on hours right now. So I think that would uh. I mean, I I don't know, Paul, if you have any thoughts on on that. Um, I don't know what the hours of operation are on the Science Center.
Um, yeah, it can, it can correspond to that. I mean, we'll turn it off in the middle of the night because it's 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 there. To communicate activities when they're going on in the in the building or on the plaza.
Okay, um, yeah, my concern is that it's. You know, it's not being used as a billboard, obviously, for the term, like. It's strictly for the the Science Center and the the SciTech City use, that's correct.
Absolutely. I mean, it will have no outside advertising or or anything like that.
Okay, um, thank you.
Chairman, for purposes of the resolution, if the matter were to be approved. Uh, we do need a condition in the resolution that limits it to onsite activities in the event that this. Ever winds up being transferred to another entity, uh, for whatever the reason. We don't want it to be converted to a billboard. So we want to be clear. That if we're going to approve it as requested and for this purpose, uh, we put that as a condition in the resolution.
Okay, and then um. The only other question I have is the, you mentioned stone in the parking lot earlier, counsel. And uh. You know, that was alluded to here and there. Um, is it a loose stone? Is it a paved parking lot? It looks like it's striped. So I I would assume it's not a loose stone, correct?
Yeah, I could respond to that, Chairman. Um, it it's it's a densely graded aggregate stone. Um, so it it would be a tightly packed stone that would be, you know, um, appropriate for the use of vehicles. Um, and and whatnot. And so that that can be striped and and accommodated for a parking area.
Okay, so, you know, when I think of loose stone, I just think of a dust cloud once cars start pulling in and out. So that's not the the scenario here whatsoever.
Correct.
Okay, um, that's it for me, guys. Anybody else? Any questions? All right, counsel, anything else from you?
Uh, I just wanna, maybe it's a nuance, but um, I'm in on the interim uh use parking lot. You know, if uh will be the the TCO. Would that it's assumed that it would be, um, you know, when when the building is is open, right? Your first, you know, you're gonna have your full CO. You have your TCO, but kind of stepping backwards where the interim use is something we we want to have as part of the project. But we do not want that to the the creation of the parking lot to be a condition of a CO. You know, because down the, you know, you know, it's a, that may be lagging behind. So that's just for resolution purposes. Uh, I wanna clear that up, you know, now rather than later.
Okay, um, generally, my concern with. You know, TCO versus CO is, you know, I've seen a number of buildings operate. Um, and the only thing holding them back from a full CO versus a TCO. Might be a few shrubs that have to be planted still. And I, you know, I always, I'm always cautious about that being the case, that any interim use would start from the CO date versus the TCO date. When obviously the interim use is. In full use at that point at the TCO.
Right.
Um. I. I don't know, Santo, is there any other way we could word that? I mean, I understand Mr. Harrington's concern.
Well, so I don't fully appreciate Mr. Harrington's concern, Chairman. Uh. Is the interim parking lot intended to be? For lack of a better term, constructed in conjunction with? The uh building or is it not?
Well, it it is, it is, you know, I I'm, I mean, I'm gonna punt on that, you know, we'll 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 have it done. Uh, because as as the chairman pointed out, you know, you could get a a TCO. And there might be some things that are not done. You're not gonna get a final CO until until everything's done. But but the uh the clock is ticking, right? Once you get a TCO. So I think the chairman's uh recommendation is is a good one.
Okay, a- and obviously, it's an interim use.
Right.
There's extensions available for that. So if if the clock ticks a little too fast for the. The applicant, you know, we'll revisit that.
Right.
Excuse me. Um, okay, so counsel, if that's it for you.
That is.
Okay, I'll check with um Mike real quick. Mike, are you okay for uh? Going through public or do you want to take ten minutes real quick before we open up public?
Uh, I'm fine going through public and maybe if we're going through and it's just taking forever, we can revisit.
Okay, absolutely. Um, yeah, just let me know if uh if it gets too much for you. All right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. I already see a hand raised. Uh, if there's anybody here from public that wants to comment. Please uh raise your hands. And if anyone is calling in and wishes to comment, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Promoting Erica.
Hi, Erica, how you doing?
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing all right. I just wanna swear you in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state and spell your name for me, please?
Erica Walker, E R I C A W A L K E R.
Thank you.
This is Walker. Good evening. Uh, we have five minutes for you.
Thank you. I am actually speaking on behalf of Dana Patton, who is on a family retreat at this moment in a remote area. And has no access to wifi. She has submitted a statement that I will be reading. Greetings all. My name is Dana Patton. I've lived in the Lafayette neighborhood of Jersey City for fourteen years. I'm asking that anything related to four one seven Communipaw or SciTech City be postponed a month. Until Ward F has proper representation. Some of our city and county representatives were involved in closed backroom deal meetings regarding these properties. And did not truly represent the people of Ward F. There have already been many lies and disrespect to residents, including assertions that there were never plans for four seventeen Communipaw. To be purchased for Berry Lane Park. Yes, um, and I'll also get to SciTech. Um, with SciTech City, we're told with the land transfer that was discussed. It would be a Jersey City Public School K through twelve in exchange for the lands. And that if ground was not broken within three years, which would have been twenty twenty, the land would revert back to the city and the agreement, no. Now neither of those things are true. There is nothing in writing guaranteeing any community benefit. And in addition to the land Jersey City gifted, the city has now agreed to more than thirty million dollars in funding. That less than one percent of Jersey City kids will ever benefit from. This is. An egregious misappropriation of public funds. Uh. If either of these pro- projects get pushed through before the next year. When our new council member can get more concrete answers for residents in. when our new council member can get more concrete answers for residents in writing, it will be clear that this board is only made up of political appointees who have no regard for public trust. Thank you, Dana Patton, end quote.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Walker. Okay, anybody else from public? We do see another hand raised, so.
Promoting Morse Canal.
Okay.
They declined their promotion, so I'm not sure. Okay, and now their hand is lowered, so.
Okay.
Yep, now it's gone again.
Okay, anybody else from public?
Okay, here we go again. All right, I'm gonna Morse Canal promoting.
Can you hear me?
We can. Are you able to turn on your camera?
Oh, yes, sure. Let's see.
Thank you, and if I could just swear you in. Do you swear the testimony you're gonna give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name?
My name is June Jones. J U N E, J O N E S.
Thank you.
Muted, Chairman.
You start my video? Okay. So.
I'm sorry, Mitch, I was muted. So once again, you know, you've been in front of us numerous times. You know the drill. We do have five minutes for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little bit of history with Morse Canal. We're in Ward F, as you know, the Lafayette section of Jersey City. It's where, in the, in the area where the SciTech building is going to, project is going to reside. Lafayette is the oldest African-American community in the state of New Jersey. There is no recognition or inclusion of African-Americans, black or brown people. Even the board members do not reflect us. So how can we rely on representation for us in this project? This is a wonderful project, I must admit, and it is an opportunity for us to be planned in it as well, being planned a part of it. The members of the project must be more inclusive. There is no diversity here. The project is in Ward F. It is, in our councilman must be placed as a board member, a full-fledged board member, not an honorary board member. We must have people to speak out and look out for the interest of Ward F. As of today, that position is an honorary position, and our meeting last night, we asked that there be more consideration in extending that board, opening it up for fair representation, not just for the project, for the people who this will represent. It is crazy that we are moving forward with science and technology and not including the people that we're building amongst. We must be included in the project. This is a project in excess of $300 million, a major project in Jersey City. Ward F is using its, Jersey City is using its public land and some public monies. Diversity and inclusion must be incorporated at every level of this project. We, if the project is anti-black and brown, the results of the project will also produce the same end results. The building name, I, you know, I understand we chose a building name because it went to the highest bidder, but our decision shouldn't be made and, and for us and in the neighborhood of the highest bidder. We're not for sale. There ought to be meaningful decision-making, and the reason for this. There are major, major contributors, African-American, black and brown people who made major contributions to Jersey City, Ward F, even Lafayette. We can give you several names, for instance. In, in, if you're running out, we should not be for sale, and, and decisions like this should not necessarily go to the highest bidder. We decide to donate to, to great causes because they are meaningful and worthy of the cause. We're asked to talk about the SciTech building only because that's what's before the planning board today. But there's a phase two, there's a phase three, and I understand there's a phase four, or maybe phases isn't the right word. I, I understand there's a second word that was used in substitution. But my point in saying this is that with, with the housing, we have questions. Who is the housing for? Is there any affordable housing in it? You, and, and, and what is the makeup of that? How are we going to choose the people who live in this housing? And, and if there is any, any subsidy with that, the purpose of that, why I'm saying that is that I want to make sure that the phases in two, three, and four work with what we're voting on in phase one. If there's not going to be any affordable housing in this project, if it's not going to benefit some of the people in Jersey City, particularly in Ward F, then I don't, maybe I don't want to vote for phase one. I, I, I think that all of these things are relevant when we're talking about the decision-making of what we're actually voting for. I, I think it's disingenuous for us to say, well, we're only voting on phase one because it's being presented tonight. Well, I think we should know what two, three, and four is, is presenting as well, and what bearings it has on the decisions that we would make tonight. So again, I would ask for more dialogue, for, for more diversity, for more understanding of the project and how we're going to go forward with this, how we're going to include that population of people who you will be building around but have not included in your planning thus far. The incubator programs, I asked a pro, a pro, a question about that. What type of incubators are we going to have? How are we going to be doing that recruiting? Again, all of these things are relevant for the project. I think it's a wonderful project. I want to reiterate that. And I think that this is a marvelous opportunity for us to, to bring along and include plans for those people who have not been planned for thus far and bring them along in the future of science and technology. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, thank you. Okay, anybody else? I see Mr. Verhovski with his hand up. If we could promote him.
Promoted, Mr. Verhovski.
How you doing?
How you doing?
Are you not driving, are you?
No, 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 I'm parked.
Wonderful. All right, I just want to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Valery Virkhovski, V A L E R I Y, last name V E R K H O V S K I Y.
Thank you.
Good evening. We have five minutes for you.
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
I would like to just express my excitement, my pure joy and excitement as a resident of Ward F of how, how, what amazing years to come with this project being the first start of this, of SciTech City. Years and years, I drive by the site, smelled, there, it was just garbage all around. No security, taken care of it. It, it, it just, it felt abandoned and lost. And instead of abandoned, the lost land, we are building for the future of our children, for a future of our city, and that starts today. I can't express how excited I am as a single father. My son is actually right behind me. I was blurted. Michael, say hi. So I'm, I'm extremely excited, and I plead and, and, and ask the board to please pass this project, and I really look forward to the next phases of this very project. Thank you so much, and good luck to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Verhovski. Okay, anybody else? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hands. And once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody else? I do see one more hand raised.
Promoting Amir.
How you doing, Amir?
Hey, can you see me? Hear me?
I can. I can hear you. I just want to swear in. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Amir, A M I R, last name Gaddit, G A D I T.
Thank you.
Mr. Gaddit, good evening. We have five minutes for you.
Yep, just one question I dialed in late. Is, is only the application for SciTech City up against the board? Did I miss the, the other project, the one on Communipaw, the high-rise, and two, I echo what the guy before me said, I, full endorsement, I'm very excited about this project, the school. And that's all.
Thank you. No, Communipaw is still up. That is next. After this, we're probably gonna take a break after this vote, but that'll be up next.
Okay, cool.
And if you're for anything else, once again, this is for the entire public. If you're for something tonight, just check the chat. We had a number of items carried tonight. But check the chat. Everything that is not being heard tonight is listed in there. Okay, so anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hands. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Chair, see no more public comments. I would like to move.
We do, we do have Ms. Walker with her hand raised. You are only allowed to testify once per application. So I assume we would hear you again at 417 Communipaw. Anybody else from public? Anybody else from public? Okay, we do have Councilman LaVaro with his hand raised.
Promoting Councilman Room.
Good evening, Councilman. Are you in?
Hi, good evening.
Have you just raised your right hand? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
My name Rolando LaVaro, R O L A N D O, last name L A V A R R O.
Thank you.
Councilman, good evening. We normally have a five-minute time limit, but we removed that time limit for council people.
Thank you, Mr. Langston.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Happy holidays to everybody. I'll say that at the outset. I'll, I'll be very brief. I won't even need five minutes. I, I am supportive of SciTech City as a whole. I do have my concerns with the SciTech High School, but that's not, it's on the agenda tonight. And I wasn't even planning to speak tonight, but I, I, I think it's echoing what almost, I think, everyone said of all the speakers, except for one, that it's a good project, SciTech City. However, I think that the concerns that were raised by Ms. Jones and Ms. Patton are valid concerns and the representation, and particularly of the Ward F community and the black community, frankly speaking. And I know that people spoke about how this is a property that has been neglected and that has been eyesore and nuisance to the neighborhood community. But the purpose for me coming on air is to say, as a city council member, that I'm sorry to those folks because this is city land. And so the city is responsible for that. And so the residents who have expressed their concerns and are asking that perhaps that this be carried over until there's proper representation, that that should be heard and that they should not be penalized for the idea that the, the city was neglectful of not taking care of the property and ensuring that it was more productive use, even before it was assigned to SciTech City, which was assigned back in 2017, 2016, or thereabouts. I don't recall the exact timing of that. But the, the residents who have concerns and would like to have their voices heard, I don't think should be penalized as a result of this. And in fact, that they should have an opportunity to have due representation and proper representation within this, this project in terms of the design and, and the other elements of the project and ensuring that the incubators and the residents and everything else is reflective of the diversity that's Jersey City. And so I'd ask you and urge you to consider that, not, not to, not to stymie the project or end the project, but to ensure that there's proper representation and to allow the project to ultimately move forward to its most inclusive of all the people of Jersey City. And I yield the rest of my time. Thank you for your time and listening.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, seeing a couple of the hands raised.
Promoting Mr. Press.
Hi, Chris, swear in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name?
Chris Perez, C H R I S P E R E Z.
Thank you.
Evening, and your five minutes starts now.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to kind of echo the sentiments that Ms. Jones and a couple of you, other people have expressed. And maybe it doesn't have any impact on the decision that you make tonight, but it is really important for us to think about these things. If we don't start today, when do we start becoming more inclusive? And as Ms. Jones stated, without blaming anybody, our society has functioned this way for an eternity, and sometimes these things happen just because we're so used to doing things business as usual. So I'm just pleading that those involved in this project really pause for a second and think about what this looks like to the black community and to the public. I was on the meeting yesterday, and there were many people who felt very concerned about being left out as blacks have been left out historically for eternity. So maybe this all sounds a little bit whatever to you, but I really ask that you really just take a moment, pause, and think about some of the points that were brought up today, what the board looks like, who we memorialize on the buildings and at the site, especially happening right next to a predominantly black community, as Ms. Jones said, possibly the oldest. You know, black Americans were enslaved and basically built this country from the ground up, and we don't talk about it enough. So this is obviously a touchy subject, but it's something that we have to continually talk about and think about and affect change. So maybe it doesn't happen this very moment, but I ask that from this point on, you take that into consideration as you bring people into the board and you think about naming and stuff like that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Perez. We appreciate it. All right, we have Mr. Gilmore's hand raised.
Promoted.
How's it going? I can, and I can see you. Let me just swear you in. If you raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Frank Gilmore, F R A N K, Gilmore, G I L M O R E.
Thank you.
Councilman-elect, good evening. Congratulations, first of all, and we have five minutes for you.
Yes, thank you. I'm asking that we, we tabled this to at least January, just so I can have more time with the constituents, more time with Paul, and talking with the lawyers. We did have a meeting yesterday, which I believe was very productive. However, there is some, some questions that raise some concerns, not alarming concerns, but concerns to say the least, and I'm just asking. And I'm just asking, I I even wrote to um, to Matt at Planning requesting that these two items be tabled just to make sure that we're really doing our due diligence with respect to taking all of the community feedback into consideration. I understand this is a huge project. I also understand that Rome wasn't built in a day, and I also understand that certain communities and certain demographics have been left out of the conversation. It was very alarming for me to hear that the Ward F Council seat was only honorary position. It was even more alarming for me to find out that the individuals who sit on a board does not reside in Jersey City. So I I'm I'm really, I'm really asking that we 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 table this so we can begin to have real conversations with uh, Paul and his team as it relates to this project, because this is going to affect us for the rest of eternity. This, this is a huge project. And when we take on huge endeavors like this, we must make sure that we're doing our due diligence at every juncture of the phase. I understand that edgework is 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 just the construction of the building and the parking lots. I wholeheartedly understand that. However, I'm of the opinion that no matter what phase it is, the community input needs to be seriously considered. So in light of all of that, I am asking that we at least table this to the next meeting so I can have more dialogue with um, with Paul and his team. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Okay, anybody else from public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hands. And once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody else from public? Please raise your hand. And once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise that hand.
Chair, see, there is no more public comment. I would like to move to close the public comment.
Second. Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Mallory, this is yours, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do you want to give us a report?
Yeah, I have um, just a few questions too. I would like um, the team to address. So um, the engineering memo, which was issued on twelve three, I know the engineer had said that he'd been coordinating further with Leishuan, um, did look for sidewalk improvements as were uh, the concerns were raised by the board earlier as well. Um, I think that what would be um, favorable from planning's perspective is if we can get a temporary sidewalk um, to provide access along Philip Street. Um, so that that would be something I would offer for them to um, consider to add as a condition. I would also I'm going to share my screen really quick. I would also add that there was um, comments on the sidewalk not extending at this northern portion uh, Long Jersey City Boulevard. So we would ask that this sidewalk do continue all the way up um, to the, to the curb cut into the, the driveway here. Um, I would also just like some further clarification on the access walkway to and from the interim parking. So we have the the proposed interim parking and we have this walkway. I just would like clarification on um, if if this is the interim design, since the, it's not envisioned that this will be a permanent use here, if it's um, envisioned that the access walkway will be changed and upgraded in the future as more permanent conditions come online for the adjacent parcels.
I could touch upon those, those comments and respond. Um, I think regarding the, the um, the first thing that was requested, I think, was the temporary sidewalk um, along the residential component you're talking about?
Yes, I think we would want it um, accessed fully along Philip Street, so in front of the interim parking temporary sidewalk to provide continuous walk from the parking area across to joining the sidewalk here um, on the Edworks site.
Yeah, I, the, the only, I guess, the only challenge with that one would be the timing of the construction of the residential, um, and and if basically ongoing construction was going to be timed, you know, shortly thereafter, the, the start of Edworks, I think um, it would, it would almost, it would almost be during, you know, the temporary sidewalk would be there during the time of construction and then that would essentially be closed off. Um, you know, I'd, I'd respectfully uh, request if that's possible to be held off until the residential comes in play. I mean, if there is any delays in terms of having the residential component uh, come online, I think having that, you know, like a temporary asphalt sidewalk or something like that would, would make sense. Um, you know, if it was, if it was past a certain period of time, if, if that's, if that's reasonable.
Um, so Chuck, do you have any clarity on to timing of phasing? If you guys have any expected timeline, I just don't want that site to end up sitting for years and years and access not being provided.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe at this time we have, we have a timing on the phasing, so I think, you know, kind of what, to reiterate what Sony's saying or the proposal would be, we could provide for a temporary uh, sidewalk there in the interim, um, you know, provided that the residential is not, construction is not going to start, you know, in the next uh, you know, months or so, we could coordinate that with planning. Um, you know, with the understanding that, you know, uh, once the, the residential construction starts, we would probably need to close that because we would probably want to direct everybody to the center so that there's one, one means of going uh, you know, through the site. So that, that's just kind of the caveat, like if, if and when, not if, but when that residential construction starts, that that temporary sidewalk would, would be shut down.
Yes, I would um, like to see that there be the interim and and with the understanding that um, that the logistics of that will be coordinated with the site plan application for that future development. So I think um, you know, any access that might have to be limited during construction can be addressed when that application appears before the board, but just you know, we're fine if the condition is to work with us for signature sets to incorporate a temporary um, sidewalk condition there, and we can um, loop in the engineering office as well.
Okay. And then Mallory, I think your, your second comment was related to the, to the um, sidewalk extending on uh, Jersey City Boulevard. I think we can, we can make that, that change. I, I don't think that's uh, would be significant um, to, to make that update. And then I think lastly, the comment relative to the, the central walkway. Um, I think that, you know, the design as it is right now has considered future um, future developments on both sides, including the schools as well as the residences, but you know, that doesn't mean that um, you know, if there were, if there were changes to design that allows connections to them, that we wouldn't react to that to, to essentially make changes and updates um, to accommodate those future developments as well. Um, but I do think that the design of the, the walkways is laid out right now, um, you know, includes concrete pavers. It's, it's, it's wide enough and and extends, you know, um, throughout the site to, to provide a connector um, for, for really all the development. And so um, you know, from our standpoint right now, I think this is, this is kind of where we think that the connector will, will remain. Um, and I, I guess the only, the only kind of condition I would put on that is, again, if there was, if there was something, you know, with the residential component that, that offered an opportunity to allow a better connection or a better flow through the site based on how that development ultimately ends up getting designed, I think we would certainly consider that to, to, to make the adjustments as needed to the walkway.
Okay, and then my um, last question would be, are we providing lighting along that walkway?
Correct, we are through, through ballards, lighted ballards.
Okay. Okay, and then um, lastly, I just wanted to know, this is probably a question for Chuck, if um, we have any ideas to the program, the future programming of that interim lot area?
You, pro, programming meaning what?
Do we see, do we, do we know what a future use could potentially be for that site, or is there no clarity there yet?
We, we do not have clarity on that yet.
Okay. Okay, so I, uh, we would offer that um, the applicant extend the sidewalk as discussed for Jersey City Boulevard, that there be a temporary condition along Philip Street um, to be reviewed by engineering and our staff for signature sets. Um, and then I, let me switch over here to my staff report. Um, so I think we're pretty familiar with the site at this point and, and the asks, I would um, iterate that. Um, I think the variances on signage are particularly suited to the mixed-use nature of the facility as proposed. Since this is going to be a campus-like condition in the future, I think um, the additional number of signs will serve to, to help wayfinding and navigability of the overall site in the future. Um, and we don't, I don't think that there's a, a, any impairment to the the redevelopment plan and granting that variance. Um, for parking, we discussed earlier on the record, I believe that Chuck agreed um, but the condition as written in the staff report, which is the, the three-year interim use, which would um, reappear before the board under an extension if needed to continue beyond that, um, and that that would be um, tied to three years from the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or a temporary certificate of occupancy. So I just want to iterate that um, that is amenable.
Yes, those, those conditions would be acceptable.
Okay, and um, beyond that, those um, future coordinations on the sidewalks and um, that we have just the standard conditions of approval.
And, and they would be acceptable as well.
Does the board have any questions for staff?
Um, I don't. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, um, that's it, Mallory?
Yep. Staff would recommend approval with the conditions as discussed on the record.
Okay, thank you. I entertain a motion then.
Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve case number P two one dash one three nine and case number P two one dash zero eight six as presented to the board tonight together with staff recommendation for approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, do we want to bifurcate those two approvals or denials?
Yeah, I, I think we should have separate votes, and if, if I could request that the subdivision be voted on first because if approved, that creates the lots for the site plan.
Sure.
Chairman, I'm okay with that. We can move the motion first uh, for the subdivision, preliminary and final.
Okay, so let's have the roll call on case P two one dash one three nine is the preliminary and final major subdivision.
I don't believe there was a second yet, Chairman.
Uh, there was from Commissioner Duckworth.
Okay, on the mo, on the emotion to approve for P twenty one dash one three nine, Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Takor.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye on the subdivision.
Okay, motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you. Okay, so being that we called uh, both motions together, uh, we'll be hearing a roll call for case P two one dash zero eight six is for the preliminary and final major site plan with variances and the conditions discussed tonight.
Okay, and a motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Allen.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the public for speaking and coming out as always. Um, anytime there's a new project going up, it's, it's very vital to have or to hear the public comment and hear what the public would like. This is a beautiful project. Um, I'm in favor of it, but without really hearing, hearing what the public wants and hearing what the public needs, I'm gonna have to say I'm gonna vote no.
Commissioner Takor.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Some, I do appreciate the fact that the public and um, and get involved and take their time. Like, we are from, anybody on this board, like uh, we are Jersey City residents. Some of us have been here all our lives. Um, this is a site I pass by all the time, going home, going to work. Um, very excited five or six years ago when it came out in the paper about this project, of the school, the potential of the Science Center, Bowen, and the Science Center teaching our young youth about science. It was exciting. And as the years passed by, um, just being a Jersey City resident, you always heard about it. It's something that was out there, um, off front, talked about. And my ward, A, we spoke about it, um, of the future of the Science Center, one day happened. It'd be a great day. Um, what a great job. Even though this is just the start of it, there's so much potential, and I love the way it started that we could put this Science Center worldwide, each people, out of these companies in technology and science. I'm in out of Jersey City. It's amazing. So with that, um, be time for dialect. There'll be time for us to tweak the little things that might be needed to be tweaked. And um, but let's not hesitate on starting it. So I vote aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
I want to thank the public for coming out this evening and voicing their concerns. I also want to thank uh, Mr. Paul Hoffman and your professional team. Indeed, Jersey City will be the model and will attract many with this project. I, I'm really excited for this project. I do ask that you engage the community as well in this project. I vote aye.
And Chairman Langston.
So, along with everybody else, I, I was excited when, you know, we heard about this years ago. Um, we went through the redevelopment plan. Um, as far as the phasing goes, I'm happy this is the first piece. Um, one thing I, I want to jump off, one thing Commissioner Torres said, and that's potential. A, and you know, this is a project that is a game changer for the city. It's also a game changer for Ward F. Um, there's potential there. There's potential in the project. There's potential in possible future affordable housing. There's potential in, you know, recognizing that the name on the side of the building should possibly reflect, reflect the neighborhood that the building is in. Um, those, uh, I agree with all those concerns. I wholeheartedly agree with all those concerns. Um, from a planning aspect, we enforce the state municipal land use law. Uh, the name on the side of the building, the municipal land use law does not care about. And that's, you know, a problem with the system. Um, I, I wish we had some say over that, but I, I do agree. I agree with the community on that. I would love to see affordable housing in that future residential project. Um, but as a first step, I think this is a big first step, and I, I look forward to see the potential that comes out of that. And you know, I would encourage Mr. Hoffman to include the community in the board. Um, you know, let's, let's make sure that we can, we can do what this project is supposed to do on different levels, not only from a school project, um, from a, a schooling aspect, but a neighborhood aspect. Let's, let's bring the people of the neighborhood up with this project. And I think if that's the case, if I think that that happens, it's, you know, it's a win. It's a win for all of us. It's a win for the city. So I am going to vote aye on this first phase. Uh, and I look forward to, you know, seeing that conversation continue with the community. Um, I would hope to be a part of those conversations in the future. Uh, any meetings that come up, I would hope to be there. So it's an aye, and uh, thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming out.
Okay, that's four in favor, one opposed. Motion carries with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, Mike, I'm sorry, it's eight oh seven. Let's give you a ten-minute break. And uh, we'll be back at eight seventeen, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, could we come to order again, everybody? Okay, we got everybody up.
Bojiano won the reelection.
What's that?
Bojiano won reelection.
He did, or is that what? Oh, he did?
He did.
Numbers came in already?
Yep.
Okay. No reaction to that. I do have a question for Santo before we get started. Do have a legal question. I know he's probably mid-sandwich right now. There he is. So counsel, I want to
About my weight, Chairman?
What's that?
The screen adds ten pounds, okay, so. Not really this heavy. This round.
Obviously. I do have a legal question on during public comment. Is it legal to have someone read a statement for someone else on record?
Chairman, we should have stopped that. Obviously, you have to come, appear, provide whatever comments you have. I try to allow everybody the opportunity to speak. I try to allow people the opportunity to speak as though they're talking for themselves, even though we suspect perhaps that they're doing somebody else's bidding, but that is not proper. We allow people to talk and go off topic. A lot of the comments made by the public on the last application were not about the site plan application or the subdivision application. And those comments aren't aren't really proper, but again, I don't like to completely cut people off and not allow people to feel that their voice shouldn't be heard, but everybody on the board understands their role and what they're voting on and what guides them in their vote, so. The long answer to the short question is no, we should not allow people to read statements on behalf of them.
Okay, but um, you know, if we read between the lines, if said statement is made on behalf of the person testifying, it's perfectly allowed.
And again, if you agree with a statement somebody else would like to make, you would get up and make that your own, right? Here's my statement, and this is how I feel. I don't think you have to read it, but.
Okay, understood.
I wrote this down so that I had it scripted, and I can give it and deliver it, et cetera, et cetera.
Sure. Okay, uh, so let's move on to item nineteen tonight is the amendments to the Mars Canal redevelopment plan regarding the creation of the Berry Lane Park North Zone, AKA four seventeen Communal Ave. Uh, this was remanded to the planning board on docket number L four three two dash two one. Uh, formal action may be taken.
So Chairman, I guess I should give some comments about this for everybody's edification, specifically uh, the members of the public that are here and interested in in this proceeding, so. As the board is well aware and public mayor may not be aware, this matter is the amendments to a redevelopment plan that was already recommended by this board to the mayor and council some time ago. And the mayor and council eventually took action and adopted those recommendations and amended the redevelopment plan. Thereafter, a litigation was brought, and that litigation was brought in the Superior Court where it properly would be venue. And the action commenced. And there was a trial before the court. And after hearing the argument, the court has sent the matter back to the board and to the council with a specific reason for sending it back, so. The court issued a written opinion and has sent it back for this body to give further explanation of its decision is essentially what the court ruled. So Chairman, if everybody would indulge me, I will actually read from the opinion, so everybody is clear. The opinion was dated September twenty third, twenty twenty one. The presiding judge is Judge Delia. He remanded the matter to this body. And his opinion reads as follows. Uh, the court is unable to determine what factual findings were specifically relied upon by the planning board in reaching their conclusions in the case. Uh, the court remands the matter to the planning board and city council so that the record may either be further developed during further hearings, or the specific factual findings and reasons for the agency's decision is more specifically delineated in the resolution. He finds that the findings of fact were relied upon in reaching the conclusions expressed in paragraph fifteen of the planning board's resolution. It's unclear if the findings of fact were adopted or relied upon by the city council. And therefore, it should follow the board's recommendation or approval. The proposed amendment, so he has remanded it back for that purpose, that purpose being for this body specifically to consider the consistency of the amendments with the master plan. So there were other allegations in the complaint that the court found to be I'll say the board found that this body had satisfied all the requirements. One of the issues was notice with respect to uh, the proceeding. The court ruled in favor of this body, found that jurisdiction was proper, found that the hearing was proper. There was no issue with any of that. The sole issue that the court had was our conclusion that the plan amendments were consistent with the master plan and the fact that the court felt perhaps there could be more description of those particulars as to the consistency with the master plan. So this body found it to be consistent. But the court is looking for the specific findings that this body relied on in finding it to be consistent. So with that, Chairman, the charge is very narrow with respect to the findings that this board relied on in determining the amendments to be consistent with the master plan.
So counsel, my my question, my concern. Uh, obviously, you know, when it comes to redevelopment plans, whether it's amendments, whether it's creations, the master plan is the document that guides us through that. And and obviously, that's where, you know, besides the state MLUL, that's where this board gets its jurisdiction from essentially. So was was the master plan The current master plan part of the proceedings, did the court? Look at this. You know, I can't imagine that they would go through the master plan page by page. But. You know, my-
Interesting you mentioned.
We, I feel we were guided by the master plan in that decision, but. You know, was that entered into evidence?
So the answer is. As you. The chairman of the planning board are well aware, as everybody on the planning board is well aware. The Jersey City Master Plan is perhaps the most comprehensive master plan in the world. It is.
Yes.
Some. 700 pages, I mean, it is a voluminous document.
Yeah.
And. There are subsections. It's a voluminous document that this body is more than familiar with. When we're talking about a redevelopment plan. Only the council can adopt redevelopment plans. Only the council can actually amend the redevelopment plan. This board's role in that process is to review the proposed amendments for consistency with that plan. This body felt that it did that. The question becomes, did the resolution articulate it to the satisfaction of the court? As opposed to just saying. The. Amendments are consistent with the redevelopment plan. The resolution. Per the court needs to be more detailed in that regard. So. This body clearly felt. That the amendments were consistent with the master plan. That is what this body's purview in this regard is. That is what we are supposed to be looking at. That being said, the opinion of the court is clear. Go back to the planning board and talk about. How the amendments are consistent with the master plan. If that is what the board so chooses to do, that's what the court wants. So with that. Matt is here. And my recommendation to the board is, let's have Matt sworn in. And let's have Matt talk about the consistency of the amendments to the. Master plan or how the amendments are consistent with the master plan. And, and let's, let's have that. Dialogue and testimony and hearing, and if the board doesn't agree and wants to change its position, then. So be it, but that's the charge before the body.
Okay, so. According to Judge Delia. You know, the scope of tonight's. Hearing is very narrow. If I'm reading this right. We're not.
Extremely.
Yeah, we're not hearing the. The changes to the redevelopment plan all over. This isn't opening it back up. This is strictly a. You know. Giving clarity to our previous decision, correct?
That's 100% correct.
Okay. Okay, um. Well, we did check off the first part of your list. Matt has been sworn in already tonight.
So for purposes of record, Mr. Chairman, although I don't believe it was necessary. We did circulate the notice again. We have an affidavit of publication with respect to that notice. That notice. Was sent certified mail in accordance with the redevelopment plan. Undercover dated November 10th, 2021. So we will mark all of that as a one for the record. And again, so that we keep the record clear. So we can mark that as a one. And then with that. Chairman. I'll yield to, to you and Mr. Ward.
Okay, thank you. And before we go to Matt. I assume we have, I do see Mr. Matt Sakutis still on tonight. I'm assuming. I don't want to assume. But I'm curious if he is. Representing anybody as a dissenting.
Mr. Massakudis is the plaintiff's counsel in the matter. The plaintiff in the matter. Is both. And I'll read the caption because I don't want to. Confuse it. According to the caption, the plaintiff is the Morris Canal Redevelopment Area Community Development Corporation. And June Jones and Mr. Matt Sakutis is the attorney of record. For the plaintiffs. And there is a, a co-counsel attorney on the matter for them as well. There is an intervenor in the action. They have all been noticed of this action and the remand hearing this evening, so. I suspect they are out there. And will be listening and will want to participate.
Of course.
At some point.
Of course, and that's, that's my reason for bringing it up. You know, obviously, we want to hear Matt's testimony. Do we want to bring anybody on? You know, obviously, after Matt testifies, we'll have a cross-examination period after questions from us. So I guess we'll cross that bridge when, when we come to it.
Yeah, so the way the proceeding should move forward. Mr. Ward will provide his testimony in the matter. At which time the board will ask. All relevant questions of, of Mr. Ward. Then we can have counsel for the plaintiff. He can ask questions of Mr. Ward. And then we can open it up to the public. Again, only to ask questions of Mr. Ward. When we get to the public. We will have to go through. What members of the public are. Represented by counsel and. Part of the plaintiff organization. And they will not be allowed to provide. Cross-examination of Mr. Ward or comments in the matter because they're represented by counsel. And with respect to the intervening party. They are also represented by counsel that is Mr. Salgian. I assume he's out there in the. In the virtual world, and if. He wants to be heard, we will also. Have him raise his hand and be brought up, but I would ask Chairman. Perhaps the prudent thing to do is have both councils brought up. And will allow them to enter their appearance. At this time, and then we can put them back out into the. Public domain there.
Okay, yeah, we do have Mr. Matt Sakutis on now. Do we have Mr. Shalgen? There he is. Now, do we? I see another hand raised. Ron Shalgen. All right, while we're figuring that out, Mr. Matt Sakutis, do you want to put your appearance on record?
Good evening, yes. Hello again, Bill Matt Sakutis. Resident of Jersey City and also represent the Morris. The plaintiffs in the lawsuit that has sent this remand back. I think as I was being plugged in, I missed a little bit of Mr. Alompi's couple of comments there. Did, did you say, Santo, that our clients cannot? Speak tonight because they're represented by counsel?
Yeah, we're not going to allow all the individuals to get up. They have you. And you are going to. Do all of the cross-examining and questioning and make whatever comments you wish to make.
Okay, well, no one, I don't know what the basis of that decision is, and. That's, no one told me that that was going to be the procedure for tonight. I know that some of the residents and. Who are also represented by me were planning on speaking at this public meeting.
This is the remand hearing. The court was clear as to the purpose of the remand hearing. Obviously. You are more than capable of articulating whatever. Their concerns are, but. This is a very limited scope proceeding, counsel, so I'm not going to have. People get up and reiterate and regurgitate other comments that. Quite frankly, would probably be best served by, by your services.
Well. Well, I will, I will say. One thing, which is. I disagree with your. Description of the scope of the hearing. And the way you have presented it tonight is that the judge's ruling. Is only limited to finding whether or not the amendments. To the redevelopment plan are consistent with the master plan. I believe that the judge's ruling also had to deal with the, I think, well, your first statement was more accurate, which said, what was the, the basis? Of. The approval of the amendments, not limited to. Whether or not they're consistent with the master plan. For example, I'll quote from, from the judge's ruling at page four. Where the judge said, quote, "For the reasons expressed on the record and herein, the court remands the matter to the planning board and city council. So that the record may either be further developed during further hearings. Or the specific factual findings and reasons for the agency's decisions be more specifically delineated in a resolution or ordinance where appropriate." That's not limited, and I don't believe his verbal decision, which. This written decision is meant to buttress or. Expand upon, was only limited to the master plan consistency or inconsistency, which was clearly also a part of it. Our argument was that there was not a sufficient basis in the record. As to why these amendments are better than what was in. The redevelopment plan prior to an amendment, i.e. the underlying zoning. And the failure to state in the record why the changes to this residential use. Are better than the previous redevelopment plan was arbitrary and capricious, so I don't think it's limited to. Consistency with the master plan. I don't think the written decision or the verbal decision. Support what you, the way you framed it, Santo, respectfully.
Okay, counsel, I disagree, so. Well, if. With, with that, Mr. Salgian, you can. Place your, but before you place your appearance on the record, counsel, I have Ms. Steinhagen. Next to you on the screen, although clearly in a separate location. Does she want to place her appearance on the record as well?
Sure.
Sure, my name is Renee Steinhagen. I'm with the New Jersey Appleseed Public Interest Law Center, and I did serve as co-counsel in this matter. However, I, just for the transparency here, I was intending to participate, not as counsel. For any Morris Canal nor any of their members. But to speak more as a public interest law center to inform this planning board about. Appleseed's own position regarding the process that went on here, as well as the rationality of the amendments. But given Mr. Lampy, your presentation, your presentation, which led me to believe that you were not going to allow. Any members of Morris Canal nor anybody from the public who might not be a member of Morris Canal. To speak. I may, I'm making my appearance, so because some of my comments, I do think other members of the community. Regarding affordable housing, we're going to articulate, so I, I don't want to, I'm, you know, Bill and I haven't coordinated here. I'm not going to start cross-examining as well. I'm going to defer to Bill. To undertake any cross-examination of Matt that goes on, but I do urge you. Even if you do limit people to speak, that people from Morris Canal Development Corporation can't speak because Bill and I are on the line. I would urge you to allow other members of the public to speak on this matter. To, to. Lay out in the record whether or not the decision to amend these zoning ordinances as proposed or as previously approved. Were actually not just consistent with the master plan, but even if they're not consistent with the master plan, that they're not arbitrary and capricious.
So. In the event that I wasn't clear, I thought I was crystal clear. Anybody that's a member of the Morris Canal. Corporation. Is not going to be allowed to speak. Other members of the public who are not associated with Morris Canal. Will be allowed to speak.
Okay, good, I'm glad to.
Through all of that, right? And we're going to have to vet that, but. That's, you know, nobody sent me a list of the membership of the Morris Canal, so we're going to have to deal with that issue. But. My comments to my board stand. That is my interpretation of the opinion. I don't think that there's any ambiguity in the opinion. I think this body's role in the process is clear under the case law. And that's how we're going to proceed. So with that, Mr. Salgian, your representation, please.
Yes, good evening, members of the board. My name is Ronald Shalgen. I represent 417 Communal Ave LLC, who is the designated redeveloper. I would simply like to point out that the court in its last paragraph of its opinion made it very clear. What the board was expected to do on remand. And if I could read it into the record, it might be helpful, or Mr. Alampi can read it into the record. But as I read it, it's crystal clear to me that the board is interested in. Evidence. That supports the. Fact that the amendments are consistent. With the master plan and nothing else. And I would ask this board to continue this hearing based upon that premise. Mr. Alampi, maybe to be consistent, maybe you should read it into the records, the last paragraph and Judge Delia's opinion.
Yeah, I don't think there's any question about it. The last paragraph of the opinion says, in this matter, the planning board found that the proposed amendment to the plan is consistent, the word consistent is underlined. With the Jersey City Master Plan. However, this court will remand the matter to the local agencies. So that they can better expound upon the findings of fact in the record that support that conclusion. That's the charge to this board.
So counsel.
I mean, that's not the only part of the decision, but there's also the part that I quoted. It's, it's an eight-page decision. And I think, is it eight or more? And I think that the judge. Also. Stated both verbally in his written, his verbal decision, which this refers to, and in the written decision, that. The factual record was not well enough established to demonstrate why this amendment is better than what was on the record before.
That is not the judge's decision. The opinion speaks for itself. The board is advised to proceed with the remand hearing. For consistency with the master plan, which is the charge of this body. So Chairman. Let's begin with Mr. Ward. And let's move forward.
Okay, agreed.
All right, I'll take that as a. Time to talk, just for the record. For the record, I am still under oath and my license is current. I'm going to start to share my screen. All right.
So Mr. Ward, I think the first question to you is. Were you present during the. Original planning board hearing on October 13th, 2020?
Yes, I was, and I also just wanted to. Bring up the fact that we also have. A quorum here tonight, and all of those members were also in attendance at that planning board meeting. Um, a quorum here tonight and all of those members, uh, were also in attendance at that planning board, uh, meeting.
Okay. Mr. Ward, you're sharing your screen. What is this document?
Uh, we're looking at a, um, memo, uh, to the planning board commissioners dated, uh. Dated, I'm sorry, uh, today, uh, December seventh, twenty twenty one, and, uh, is drafted by myself. Uh, and this is the master plan consistency report, uh, regarding the Morris Canal redevelopment plan amendment. Uh, more specifically known as the Berry Lane Park North Zone, uh, the version dated October fifth, twenty twenty. Uh, and this was the matter that was remanded to the board.
You're the author of this report.
I'm the author of this report. Um, I do want to enter this as, uh, as an exhibit. It is a six-page document and. Uh, I want to do that, but I'm going to be, uh, switching over to a PowerPoint presentation. To kind of go through these in, 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 uh, a way that's easier to just kind of digest. But I plan to, uh, supplement, um, the presentation with the, with the. With the points and, uh, that are made in this report, uh, and to supplement that through testimony as well.
All right, so you want to mark this document as. A two?
As a two, please, yes.
Okay, Mr. Ward.
And Matt, if you could, uh, if you're referring back to your memo. Uh, could just point out, you know, if you don't switch screens back and forth, if you could point to a page number.
I'm sure, yes, I can do that. Um, me, let me pull this over here. As I pull up the presentation. All right.
And what is this?
This is the PowerPoint presentation, uh, that I'm going to be using to, uh, run through. The, uh, the memo that I just presented and entered as an exhibit. Um, this is an eleven-page presentation. Um, and, uh, it will reflect, uh, the master plan goals, objectives, key recommendations. That were highlighted in the master plan consistency report.
So this will be a three?
Yes, and, uh, this can be called the master plan consistency report presentation.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
And then Chairman, for purposes of the record, just to keep everything clear. Uh, we're gonna mark the judge's opinion as a four, just so we have it all together.
Okay, understood.
And for. Clarification of the record. The opinion itself is ten pages. It's dated December or September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. And while I'm at it, A five will be the order in judgment of the court. A one-page document dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
Hey, I'll start by quoting the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA forty-eight colon twelve A. Dash seven, seven D, which specifies that all provisions of the redevelopment plan. Uh, shall either be substantially consistent. Sorry, I thought I switched sheets. I'm having a little bit trouble here. One second. Hmm, I need to exit. One moment. All right, here we go. Sorry about that. All right, so I'm just gonna start here with the, uh, the quote from the local redevelopment and housing law, um, which specifies that. All provisions of the redevelopment plan shall either be substantially consistent with the municipal master plan or designed to effectuate the master plan. And, uh, the purpose of this presentation and related memo is to expound upon the amendments. Consistency with the master plan and detail how the amendment is designed to effectuate the Jersey City Master Plan. So I'm going to start with the master plan goals. So the provisions of the ma, the amendment are consistent with the two thousand Jersey City Master Plan, which includes the following specific goals. Provide unique, attractive and high-quality residential areas that would serve existing and attract new residents with a wide range of housing. And lifestyle choices. Increase availability of community resources for residents through an efficient system of shared citywide resources. Such as libraries, hospitals, colleges and universities, recreational facilities, waterfront amenities, police facilities, et cetera. And residential specific resources such as schools, community slash, uh, slash pocket parks, daycare facilities and senior centers. Uh, the third bullet enhance connections between residential areas, activity districts. And community resources in the city through an attractive and pedestrian-friendly community access system. Incorporating a wide range of mode choices, uh, more specifically mass transit, personal automobile, bicycle and pedestrian. So in support of these, uh, goals. The provisions of the master plan, uh, require certain community benefits and performance standards which are consistent. Uh, with, with the goals and objectives of the master plan. The amendment includes requirements and provisions for the following community benefits and or performance standards. Right-of-way widening requirements, inclusionary housing requirements, recreation center requirement. Preservation of the Steel Tech Head House Building. Neighborhood commercial facility requirements and public open space requirements. Each of these community benefits or performance standards include specific requirements to ensure that redevelopment of the site provides a unique. Attractive and high-quality residential and mixed-use development that serves existing and new residents. Housing choice and opportunities expanded through the incorporation of deed-restricted onsite affordable housing. The availability of community resources is diversified through the incorporation of a recreation center. Adjacent to and accessible from Berry Lane Park and Garfield Avenue Light Rail Station. The required recreation facility must be at least twenty-two thousand square feet. Include an indoor regulation basketball court as well as other recreation and youth programming to be determined. And provide for a minimum of forty off-street part, public parking spaces. The public open space requirements call for a pedestrian plaza and a minimum, uh. Of a twenty-two thousand square foot public open space linking Berry Lane Park through. Uh, two restaurants, retail and other commercial along Communipaw Avenue through pedestrian-friendly means. The required public open space in the zone is to be an activity center. Which may be used for events like farmers markets, local music concerts, art shows, job fairs. Fitness classes, holiday markets, et cetera. In addition to the required community benefits and performance, performance standards of the amendment. There are applicable height, coverage, setback bulk, parking, preservation. Landscaping signage and general design standards included to ensure quality redevelopment. Any development that occurs in this zone, which is not subject to a redevelopment agreement. Is bound by the existing zoning, the industrial zone. Land use objectives. The provisions of the amendment are consistent with the land use objectives in the two thousand Jersey City Master Plan. Which include the following. Address the changes in industrial land use related to continuing loss of manufacturing in the region. Encourage and promote brownfield redevelopment. In all sections of the city. Establish proper boundaries and buffer zones between industrial and residential zones. Uh, touching upon those first three bullets, the existing site is a brownfield. A former steel manufacturing facility mostly cleared and vacant. Once redeveloped, the new buildings, private, uh, the new buildings privately owned public open space and recreation center. Will provide a buffer between industrial uses on Berry Lane. And low-density residential zones along Woodward Street and Communipaw Avenue. The fourth bullet, promote the creation of incubator space. The amendment includes the neighborhood commercial facility requirements. Which will result in an incubator space being required. The, the incubator will be at least fourteen thousand square feet of commercial. And at least forty percent of that facility. Shall be reserved for a period of at least ten years for certified small minority women and veteran-owned business enterprises. Or disadvantaged business enterprises as certified by the state of New Jersey. Rents are also to be subsidized for the excess of the incubator and those businesses. The last bullet. Coordinate land use planning with the existing transportation network and planned improvements to it. The amendment is effectuating this objective by locating high-density residential within walking distance of the Garfield Light Rail Station. Is using existing transportation network to best coordinate land use planning. Housing objectives. The provisions of the amendment are consistent with the housing objectives in the two thousand Jersey City Master Plan, which include the following. Acknowledge the need for a balance of housing options in the city, including affordable housing for low and moderate households. Encourage the continued development of a variety of housing ranging from affordable to middle income and market rate units. The amendment reinforced this objective. By allowing for redevelopment with residential uses that include both market rate and deed-restricted onsite affordable housing. The inclusionary housing requirements specify that the redevelopment include a set aside of at least five percent. Of the total residential units on, for onsite affordable housing for families up to moderate income. For a minimum of thirty years. Economic development objectives. The provisions of the amendment are consistent with the economic development objectives in the two thousand Jersey City Master Plan, which include the following. Promote the development of a diversified economy that will increase employment, strengthen the tax base and protect the Jersey, uh, protect the city. Against cyclical downturns. Encourage appropriate development in neighborhoods and in citywide active. Uh, and, sorry, and citywide, I think I added the in, uh. One second here, let me see here. Uh, encourage appropriate development in neighborhoods and citywide. I think I messed up on this quote, so we'll just move on. Um, I'll have to double-check that, um, for the report. Uh, going to city council. Uh, should it move forward, support and promote brownfield redevelopment to return vacant and underutilized properties to productive use. Retain existing small businesses and attracts new small businesses. And encourage the creation of minority-owned businesses through available support programs. The existing site is a brownfield. As stated, it's a former steel manufacturing facility that is underutilized and vacant. The amendment will allow the site to be returned to productive use. The amendment allows for the new, new construction, which will include multi-unit residential, a recreation center. And open space in addition to a neighborhood commercial facility. The commercial facility is a required element of the zoning and geared toward economic development. Facility is required again to be at least forty, fourteen thousand square feet of commercial. And forty percent of that is reserved and subsidized for those, uh, certified businesses as I stated before. In addition, the Steel Tech Head House, a small building adjacent to the future, uh, neighborhood commercial facility. Is to be reserved, preserved and restored as a commercial use and should also generate jobs. Regarding the privately-owned public open space, the amendment allows for farmers markets, holiday markets and community events. To be held at the new park space, which will also be an opportunity for local entrepreneurs to sell wares and goods. Community facilities objectives. The provisions of the amendment are consistent with the community facilities objectives in the two thousand Jersey City Master Plan, which includes the following. Maintain and or upgrade where necessary existing community facilities, including parks, schools. Police and fire facilities, libraries and community centers. Upgrade community facilities to accommodate population growth and address the changing needs of the population. Provide a balance of citywide community facilities that are accessible from every neighborhood. And a core package of community facilities in every neighborhood to serve local residents. Encourage the creation of community resource centers which will serve all neighborhoods. Create activity centers for teenagers and senior citizens. Encourage the creation of after-school programs for children. For example, arts and music, sports and learning. The amendment includes the creation of the recreation center adjacent to and accessible from Berry Lane Park and Garfield Avenue Light Rail Station. The facility again must be two, twenty-two thousand square feet. Include an indoor regulation basketball court as well as other recreational youth programming to be determined. And provide a minute, a minimum of forty off-street park, public parking spaces. Is located near the light rail and the provision for off-street parking makes the recreation center accessible from every ne, neighborhood. The programming still to be determined is broadly assessed, uh, addressed in the amendment. Is envisioned that the recreation center will have a mix of facilities related to sports, exercise, dance, education. Technology, arts and other extracurricular activities. Administrative offices and storage space will be needed and are required in the amendment as well. The facility is designed to accommodate population growth and address the changing needs for nearby citywide youth. As it is providing an indoor facility which the city is lacking. Historic preservation objectives. The provisions of the amendment are consistent with the historic preservation objectives in the two thousand Jersey City Master Plan, which include the following. Balance historic preservation with economic development. Promote the proper restoration of historic structures and discourage the subdivision of historic buildings. There are very few structures still on the existing underutilized site. Staff confirmed that the Steel Tech Head House along Communipaw Avenue near Manning Street would not be approved for demolition. So instead, the amendment requires the preservation of that structure. But balances economic development by allowing for re-earditions. In addition, adjacent to the planned pedestrian plaza, the restored building will house a commercial use. Further balancing and promoting preservation alongside economic development. Circulation element, uh, from two thousand eleven, goals, objectives, strategies and actions. The provisions of the amendment are consistent with the goals, objectives, strategies and actions contained in the two thousand eleven circulation element of the Jersey City Master Plan. Which includes the following. Objective G one dash one, develop and implement smart growth strategies to locate new residential within walking distance. Of bus stops and passenger rail stations with the highest density zone located within walking distance of passenger rail station. That mix, uh, that mixes residential land use and with commercial use and that locates industrial zones near port facilities, freight rail lines. Regional highways and the NJDOT portway, portway projects. Objective G one dash five. Provide for green connectivity between neighborhoods, schools, places of employment and other community facilities through greenways, parks and trails. Goal G one dash A. Parentheses little A, use zoning incentives and capital improvement programs to encourage pedestrian scale mixed-use development. And redevelopment within walking distance of public transportation and industrial. Development and redevelopment near port facilities, freight lines, regional highways and portway. Goal G one dash A parentheses little C. Use zoning incentives and capital improvement programs to create new public spaces and green connectivity. And to increase mass transit connectivity, including development of new stations and services. The amendment allows for the new resident, new residential mixed-use development within walking distance of bus stops and the Garfield Avenue Light Rail Station. The amendment includes standards and requirements for publicly accessible privately-owned open space. And plaza that link Communipaw Avenue near Manning Avenue to Berry Lane Park. The recreation center and the light rail station beyond. The design of the new open space. The design of the new open space. Plaza and open space and plaza are to pull from the themes of Berry Lane Park to appear as a continuation of the greenway and trails through Berry Lane Park. The amendment uses zoning and incentives to encourage redevelopment for the accessible implementation, circulation goals and objectives. Recreation and open space master plan. Uh, the provisions of the amendment are consistent with the Jersey, with the key recommendations contained in the two thousand eight Jersey City Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. Dated June two thousand eight, which includes the following. Build new recreation facilities to meet public needs. There is room in several of the existing parks to add needed facilities such as athletic fields, parking area, skate parks, et cetera. Due to spatial constraints, maximum building needs to be achieved where appropriate. Work closely with private developers to construct new parks and recreation areas. Requiring developers to provide public parks and recreation facilities should be part of the site plan approval process. The amendment includes the recreation, the creation of a recreation center and public open space. Redevelopment of the site is required to include at least twenty thousand square feet of publicly accessible open space that is privately owned. And a pedestrian fronting uh press pedestrian pedestrian plaza fronting on Communipaw Avenue near the intersection of Manning Avenue. The developers required to maintain the public open space. The amendment requires that the landscape architecture of the plaza and public open space reference the industrial past of the Steel Tech Site and tie in with themes, colors and landscape design of Berry Lane Park. The recreation center requirements also result in the the developer building out the shell and the uh recreation uh basketball court of that facility. And working with the city to develop further programming. Before delivery. The purpose of these requirements are to expand the recreation facilities and maximize open space on the site consistent with the master plan. And directly adjacent to existing park Berry Lane Park. Conclusion, the amendment to the Morris Canal redevelopment plan are consistent with the policy, goals and objectives of the two thousand Jersey City Master Plan, therefore warranting recommendation to the Jersey City Council for approval.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
So Matt, I just want to follow up before Chairman Langston starts questioning. You've just broken down the various sections of the master plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
So within the master plan, there's various subsections of the plan.
That is correct, and there's also elements that um that were adopted at later dates uh or reexamination reports that were adopted over the years.
So the two thousand Jersey City Master Plan has specific goals and objectives.
Correct.
And then within that plan, there are different subsections of the plan, the land use objective, the housing element objective. And those sections have both as well.
That is correct.
And those were the different sections that you were just citing to and testifying to.
Correct.
And then obviously, the various components of the proposed amendments are what you were discussing as far as the rec facility and how that satisfies either an objective or a goal or either the master plan or an element of.
Correct.
So you've gone through the entire proposed amendments to the redevelopment plan and looked at them in relation to the master plans, is that what you did?
Yes.
And your review of those documents has led to the articulating those elements and objectives that you believe are consistent or being met by the proposed amendments.
That's correct.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, Matt, um. First of all, I appreciate the thorough report. It doesn't leave a lot of questions unanswered for me. I- if this plan was not in place. This could be an industrial use, correct? Uh, like an as of right industrial use currently.
The the zoning that's in place, uh, if the property owner chooses to not uh become a designated developer or to forego designation. They are able to uh apply under the industrial zone that exists in the redevelopment plan.
Okay, so that could be zoned for manufacturing.
I don't have the list of the permitted uses in front of me. It uh it might be a, I more along the lines of light industrial, so warehousing, office. I have to look at whether or not manufacturing, but some, some, maybe some forms of manufacturing, but I don't sure if like heavy manufacturing would be allowed. I'd have to re- review the list of permitted uses there.
Okay, so you know, let's say a light industrial use would be maybe a print shop, a screen print shop, something like that along those lines, correct? And again, I'm not trying to nail.
Yeah, I would have to look at the list of for uses, I I would prefer to look at that before I would answer that question. I know for a fact that uh warehousing um and office are allowed there.
Okay.
But I believe office is more kind of in a um uh in retail sales of goods and services are more in this like accessory type of instance.
Okay, um, so warehousing facility. How, you know, obviously we have warehousing facilities in the city currently. Would that site comply with, you know, any green objectives? If we did create new industrial or light industrial uses. Is that consistent with any green objectives in the plan or is that contrary to any green objectives?
If we allow them to use, if we allow the site to be developed as industrial.
Yeah.
There are, I mean, there are some coverage and setback standards, um, but beyond that, the, as far as a lot coverage. They're bound by what's in the redevelopment plan, uh, if that's what you're counting as green standards.
I I'm thinking that I'm also thinking about, you know, bringing any light industrial use would bring truck traffic. You know, more, more more supply chain traffic to that part of the city. You know, obviously, that's not the best use next to a park. I'm just curious if there's anything in the master plan that that's, you know, speaks to that.
Not not, off the top of my head, I do not recall. Uh, I do recall some portions within the the redevelopment plan. In in some of the the opening portions of the redevelopment plan that that speak to the impacts of of truck traffic along Communipaw Avenue. Off the top of my head, though, I don't uh recall anything in the master plan that that speaks of to that specific point that you're asking or that specific question that you're asking.
Okay. Yeah, that that's really my only question. Uh, I'll open it up to everybody else. Anybody else from the board have any questions on Matt's report?
Nobody, anything?
I I have a, I'll just um, a question, has this um you're reading this um sections of this plan and then amendments to the plan. And basically, I'm thinking back of when I was hearing this case presented to the board, presented to the board and taken in. As the planning staff. Planning board member, the planning staff. It seems like time and time again. I'm finding that things in this plans, recreation, storefronts, business. Seem to be without a doubt part of the master plan and that's what was in this. In this redevelopment of this project, actually, it was feeding all the needs that it had. Whether I saw it differently, I would have to say and met the needs of the government plan and the master plan. As you've been reading this, what you just read now, basically. Would that be a right assumption for me to be taken that way that this all sounds to me as part of a what was being brought, thought to us as part of the master plan. I don't know if I'm clear with my question, but I'm trying to figure out if I'm second guessing myself and wondered if I'm missing something and I can't find myself missing. Basically, that's what you said, it's.
Eddie, if um, if you let me expand on on it for a second and and stop, stop me if I'm going down the wrong route that you're not talking about. Um, another question I I do have, Matt, is the involvement in planning staff on this redevelopment plan, on the creation of the redevelopment plan, because to be honest, and I I think this is what Eddie's speaking to. You know, as we go through the the redevelopment plan, as you make that presentation. It, there's parts of the redevelopment plan that was created that are verbatim to the master plan, a- and I think that's you know, to me, it's it's clear as day and maybe that's what Eddie's having trouble with, is that it's so clear. You know, i- in a- as the night goes on, I'll I'll expand on, you know, what meets what goals in the redevelopment plan. But I don't know, Eddie, am I
No, all due respect, uh, thank you very much, uh, Chairman. Yes, that's what I'm trying to get at, I'm, it's almost like to me as a planning board member for quite a few years now. And I'm listening to this over again, seeing how could it not have been my vote? Being clear and understanding that this was part of the master plan and the redevelopment plan. What was being said that tonight, spoken down step by step, um. And yes, and you are like, uh, Chairman, um. I do consider the work that the planning staff puts forth into it because they do a lot of homework and in these plans, so they that that's so that's what I'm trying to get at, uh, Chairman, you cleared it up for me, um. I was just um, wondering matter if I was the son because it's so clear that I don't see what the issue was, uh, that's why I'm just missing. That's all, that's.
So Commissioner. I don't. Is your question, are you, are you missing something? I don't want you to feel like you're missing something.
No, I I, it's like, son, it's so simple, it's so clear. That I'm saying, you know, it's like, okay, I'm gonna give you a quick example. I go, I went to New York City Park in front of a Broadway theater, I found parking, two minutes. I went to a parking lot to pay for parking, I was too concerned to be true. It was so clear, I had a parking spot and I didn't trust it. I'm not missing anything, I'm 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 listening to Matt break it down and I'm listening to a, I'm thinking of a plan that was, I voted on, that met every requirement that he's talking about. That's what I'm saying. I I I'm just wondering if uh I'm just, but let's let let the rest of the question go on, I know it's gonna get clearer to me, but it's so clear, it's got me a little confused, sorry.
So Matt, if if you could, maybe um you know, let's wrap that into my question also, where, what was planning's, planning staff's involvement with the redevelopment plan creation?
Sure. Uh, sure, uh, so but and looking at this site, it's a three point three acre site, I believe. Uh, it's a large unusual site in Jersey City that's uh abutting a low density residential zone, um, also fronts on uh a a main street in Jersey City, uh, Communipaw Avenue. And the most of the site has been cleared as a, as a former steel manufacturing industrial site. In when the proposal was brought to us to change the zoning to uh mixed use residential. Knowing the history of uh of the Berry Lane Park, uh, we we sought to incorporate public open space and recreation facilities uh into the the amendment. Now, creating open space um and setting aside uh area for uh a recreation center in turn has impacts on what the remaining bulk uh could be. So I in reviewing the transcript from the original um the the original uh hearing. Much public comment was was about the seventeen stories, but that's in direct relationship to creating a uh public open space on the site that's privately held. In some public outreach, uh, one of the requirements that was uh was brought into the amendment was the neighborhood commercial facility. Which it was furthering many of the economic development uh goals in the master plan. The other element that was uh, I believe always in the amendment was the preservation of the Steel Tech Head House as well as uh the inclusionary housing requirements. Also, those were done to meet the goals of the master plan uh for those respective uh the housing objectives and the preservation element objectives. Does that shed some light or 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 bring uh about uh some answers to your question?
Absolutely. Eddie, how about you?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Could you, the Berry Lane Park has already been constructed, it's there, it exists, right?
Correct.
So the redevelopment plan has already been in existence for years and years and years at this point. And various projects have been built according to the redevelopment plan.
Correct. Correct.
So as the redevelopment plan itself becomes satisfied by As the redevelopment plan itself becomes satisfied by projects, you have remaining pieces.
Correct. Yeah, so uh by way of some history for this, I think they call it the Berry Lane area of the industrial zone. Berry Lane Park in and of itself is actually in the same zone. It's an industrial zone. As well as some properties that front on Garfield Avenue. As well as some of the properties that front on Berry Lane. Um, I believe um the business that is known as ideal. Has has come in and and done upgrades to the facility since this redevelopment plan existed. The the building at the corner of Berry Lane and Communipaw Avenue is actually in. Yet and yet another overlay within the redevelopment plan. Uh, the adaptive and after an adaptive reuse overlay that they've utilized. In the creation of the factory. That a a restaurant. Bar at that location. So. This area, which the zoning is not being taken away, the industrial zoning. Which I would say in some respect is also meeting some of the industrial, uh the land use objectives that we mentioned here. But are allowing for an alternative. Alternative scheme to to allow for the furthering of a redevelopment in the area. And I do want to reread that sentence that gave me so much trouble. I think it's just an oddly the oddly phrase sentence. It's encourage appropriate development in neighborhoods and in citywide activity focus areas. To provide an equitable distribution of jobs and services. Some of that wording was just throwing me for a loop. I thought it was a typo. But that is a direct quote from the master plan.
So Matt, within the master plan, which in some. I mean, it's hundreds of pages, literally. It sounded like. You believe that this is not only consistent, but furthers. At least 15 objectives and goals. I think it was more than that.
Yes, it's certainly furthering the objectives and is and is designed to effectuate the master plan. And subsequent elements of the master plan.
416 pages. Is the master plan document.
Okay. Santo, anything else?
So again, I'll just go back to the. Purpose of the remand. Is. To determine consistency with the master plan or the proposed amendments to the redevelopment plan consistent with the master plan. That's the purpose of the remand for this body. And you've heard the testimony of Mr. Ward. I think Commissioner Torres. Was was right on the money from his point of view. And Mr. Torres, please correct me if I'm wrong, but. Mr. Torres seems to have articulated that. He felt back in October of last year that the amendments were essentially. The items articulated in the master plan. Is is that what you were articulating?
That's what I'm trying to say. Seems so clear to me. Yes.
So. Now you've got Matt's testimony of those exact goals. So now you're hearing the exact goals within the master plan, the exact objectives within the master plan. And the question is, are the amendments consistent with them? And if they are, which ones and what is consistent? What amendments of the redevelopment plan are consistent with what goals and objectives of the master plan? Or what are inconsistent? With the master plan, if you were to find that it is inconsistent. And therefore, that would be the recommendation to council, that it's not consistent with the master plan. But it sounds to me that. I've absolutely heard it from Commissioner Torres. He believed this when he. Recommended it the first time. He still believes it, and now it's. That much. Clearer and more articulate. So with that, Chairman. I think we should invite Mr. Matt Secudus to question Mr. Ward unless any of the board members have any other questions of Mr. Ward whatsoever.
Yeah, I don't have anything else for Matt. Anybody else before we we turn it over?
No, also in agreement with Commissioner Torres, this is very clear to us then. And again. Same clear as crystal clear can be.
I agree with Chris to care too. I echo the crystal clear too.
Okay, thank you, Harkesh. All right, um, I guess we'll go. You know, we have our pick of attorneys here. Mr. Matt Secudus, do you want to start off?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to go over a few topics, clearly the the master plan, but just to follow up on something the chairman was asking you. I I think he was asking about how. Good evening, Matt. I'm trying to find you on the the screen here. Where you are, but there you go. Okay, hi. The chairman asked about planning, working on this, and you said when this idea was brought to planning. To change this to residential. Is it fair to say that the idea to modify? The permitted land use in this redevelopment plan did not originate in planning?
To modify it from industrial to mixed use residential?
Well, I I'll have to disagree with that characterization. And then we'll get to the question. To modify from the existing use, which as I understand it, let's start there. It isn't the existing use. Either or light industrial. Or park?
In the plan?
No, it is not.
So park is not a permitted use there?
It's not an either or, and that's where the list ends.
What else is there beside industrial and park, light industrial and park?
Warehousing, distribution. All the accessory uses. I don't have the list in front of me.
But that would fall, you're you're claiming warehousing is allowed, but that would be under the light industrial?
If that's how you want to categorize it, yes.
Okay.
It's we we call it list of permitted uses.
And park is one of them, right?
I do not know, but I can check. Would you like me to pull up the redevelopment plan?
Well, you you just said that the the Perry Lane Park was also. Zoned industrial, right? But it became a park, and that wasn't because of a variance.
Well, it's done by the city, so it might have been done without need for a use variance, but I'd have to pull up the redevelopment plan to check. Because a public purpose doesn't really need a use variance if it's done by the city, does it, Bill?
I mean, it would be deviation, but no.
Maybe a section of thirty-one.
I believe this area is also allowed for for recreation and park preexisting. Before the.
Yes, I believe.
What's on the books today, since the amendments aren't on the isn't an effective law yet?
Yes, and that's what I that's what I testified to already, is that I knew that the this site was desired to be an expansion of Berry Lane Park. And the amendments are effectuating that vision.
Wait, the amendments are making this Steel Tech site, this parcel, part of Berry Lane Park?
Well, let me go back to one of the objectives that I quoted. Work closely with private developers to construct new parks and recreation areas. Requiring developers to provide public parks and recreation facilities should be part of the site plan approval process. That is from the Recreation Open Space Master Plan, June 2008. It's a key recommendation. If a developer wants to utilize the mixed use residential zoning on this site. They are required to provide a a public open space of at least 20,000 square feet. And a recreation facility of at least 22,000 square feet to include youth programming yet to be determined, as well as a recreational basketball court. To me, that is very clear, that is meeting this key recommendation. And if they don't provide that, they have to abide by the industrial zone.
Okay, but that wasn't my question. My question is, they're not making this part of the park. This is not becoming part of Berry Lane Park, this this land.
I can't answer that question because it's that's a very semantic question. We did include design standards, which I can, which I believe I referenced in my testimony.
Well, let me just go back to the original question. The the chairman was asking you about the coordinate.
If you'd like me to answer, one second.
Okay, sure.
The amendment requires that the landscape architecture of the plaza and the public open space reference the industrial pass of the Steel Tech site. And tie in with themes, colors, and landscape design Berry Lane Park. So there is a clear intent in the amendment to make this appear as though, if it's not necessarily city owned. That it does appear to be an extension of and part of Berry Lane Park.
So some of the land will be will be will be landscaped for 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 and that you're saying is gonna be like Berry Lane Park. Okay. Who brought this idea to planning? Because I'm assuming this did not originate in planning, right?
Which idea are you talking about?
Get back to the 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 amendments that are before the council tonight to convert this. Current redevelopment plan, which would allow for park. Or light industrial into residential. Where did that idea originate? Was that your idea?
Council, can we stick to cross-examine of the direct examination provided by Mr. Ward?
That was exactly what was asked by the chairman. He asked him about planning's coordination cooperation.
And recommendation in the.
Amendment. That's my no, that's my question. If you're not going to allow him to answer it, you can instruct him. My question is. Did this idea for the rezoning? Originating?
It's not resuming. Let's use the right terms, counsel. This is an amendment to the redevelopment.
Fair, well, to me, I think it's a close enough term. The change in permitted use of the land as embodied in the redevelopment amendments. Where did those ideas evolve and come from?
I still, you have to be more specific because if you're not specific, I can't answer the question.
I think that's extremely specific. I'll I'll ask it again. I'll try to be even more specific. Tonight, we're considering amendments to the redevelopment plan, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we're not considering them. We remanded them to talk about the master plan consistency.
Who came up with the idea for those amendments?
Who came up with for the idea for those amendments? I don't know that. I don't know the, I don't know an answer to your question. It doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, you don't know if they developed within the city or from the developer or someone else. You don't know. Okay. All right, we'll ask another question. Is this neighborhood where the proposed residential development would take place? And the other buildings that are built within the redevelopment plan? Are they of a different scope as far as size and density and height than what would this amendment would allow?
They are close in scale to the Berry Lane South Zone of this redevelopment plan, as well as other zones that are close to other redo. Light rail stations in the redevelopment area.
I mean, the existing housing stock in the neighborhood, is it more one and two family homes as opposed to 17 story 400 unit buildings?
What are you defining as the area?
Well, how about within, I don't know, the a few square blocks of the area?
Counsel, we're starting to get way outside of the range.
Sure, right up the hill is a 13 story senior facility. And in the other general area, there is, as I've mentioned, low resident, low density residential.
It's mainly low density residential.
There is also a four story industrial building. That's across the street on Communipaw Avenue, which is probably generally closer to what we would consider a five story building if you. Had normal floor to ceiling heights.
Okay.
Beyond that, there is a multifamily. Residential complex called the Whitlock Courtyard, which includes a great number of affordable units. Historic preservation. To the south, as I mentioned, there is an approval for a rather tall building. I think it would be under the definitions of the LDO be considered. A high-rise building. On the western side of. Garfield Avenue, there is an approval for a five story mixed use residential building. On the other side of the light rail tracks in the canal crossing redevelopment plan. There are areas right next to the Garfield Avenue Light Rail Station, which I are zoned for up to, I believe, 14 stories. So it really depends on what you're calling the area.
Yeah, and I mean, all of Jersey's, I guess, if you want to consider Jersey City the area, we have 70 story buildings too. Uh, how about within the redevelopment uh uh zone of the area, which in the within the geographic boundaries of the redevelopment plan?
What's the upper limits of the the heights in the Morse Canal redevelopment plan?
Yeah, what what's the general nature of the housing there?
I do not know. I'd have to look at it. How are you defining it? Lots, parcels, units?
The geographic boundary, okay. Is it mainly one and two family homes?
To the cross-examination of.
This is what I'm doing. If you're not gonna let me do it, Santo, I'm doing it. So don't interrupt me. Let me engage in the question. The question is very simple. Is the primary nature of the homes in the area one and two family homes or is it not?
Well, you asked if the geographic area is mostly one and two family homes. I would actually say that. If you look at the area zoned industrial, geographically, it might be zoned industrial.
Okay, now talk about the zone. I'm talking about what is in existence there now? What's the character of the neighborhood?
That's what I just answered. In the Morse Canal redevelopment plan, I would have to do. Extensive spatial analysis to answer your question, but if memory serves me, a nearly 50% of that redevelopment plan is zoned industrial.
Okay, so. Let's talk a little bit about some of the issues in the master plan. I'll point out some areas where I think it's, seems to me to be inconsistent. We can go over them one by one, or I can list a few, okay? On volume two of the page 25, it talks about needs to be actions that need to be taken in generalized area. It talks about increase the ratio of owner occupied versus rental housing. This would not achieve that goal of the master plan. It talks about, on that same page in 25 in volume two, achieve a better fit between infill development and existing environment. I would assert to you that this does not achieve that goal of the master plan. Also in volume two, on page 41, where it talks about the, I believe it's entitled Residential Areas and Urban Design Objectives. It is to, quote, facilitate context-sensitive growth and development. I would assert to you that this does not achieve that objective of the master plan. On volume one, page three, land use objectives, talks about acknowledging the distinct characteristics of residential neighborhoods through design standards. The scale of new development should be consistent with the neighborhood. I would assert to you that this 17-story building is completely out of the character of this existing neighborhood, which you just said you couldn't really opine on. And then it also there talks about providing a range of housing densities appropriate to the character of the existing neighborhoods, which would, for example, promote low and medium-density housing. So then there's just the, also the map itself in the master plan, which does not include this parcel as being residential, includes it as being open space. Would you say that, for example, those things I pointed out, but let's start off with the last one, that the map in the master plan does not call for the residential development that we see here, that this is blocked off as open space, this particular parcel that we're talking about?
Yeah, I think you're referring to the land use map in the redevelopment plan, which I will agree, it does address, identify this area as open space. It also identifies the Tenmark Building as open space. It also identifies the factory building as open space. It identifies the ideal building as open space. The commercial automotive and residential buildings facing Garfield Avenue is open space. And it incorrectly identifies lots north of Terry DeHaer Park as open space. So there might have been a broad stroke done in the mapping of that land use map. I'm not entirely sure why we would zone these privately-owned lots for public open space, especially some that are listed in the plan as not to be acquired.
Well, this one was, clearly, we know that there was an effort, and at least at one point in time, the desire to make this parcel open space part of Berry Lane Park, correct?
Correct. Then the prior hearing, one of the exhibits or one of the distribution materials was a letter from Diana Jeffrey, the director, or I believe director. I believe that's her title of the JCRA, the Jersey City Redevelopment Authority, speaking to the fact that that they attempted to purchase the property and were unable to do so, or she provided testimony to that. I don't remember off the top of my head now. It might have been testimony to city council regarding that history.
Right, and so that would reflect that this, the master plan map is correct here, that this development is inconsistent with the master plan's land use map, which calls for this property to be open space. Isn't that an inconsistency with the master plan here?
Repeat your question, please.
Okay. There's a map in the master plan that says for each basic little parcel of the city, what the master plan envisions that parcel to be as far as a use goes, a land use, correct?
No, not individual parcels. It doesn't have parcels on the map.
Not block and lot, but you can, you can see in a given geographic region of the city, including the Steel Tech Site, you can see what land use it falls into.
Yes, there's a land use map and it has land use categories mapped on that map.
Okay, and.
Very broad, though.
And, and this particular parcel falls into a use of open space and park, which is what this city tried to do as Diana Jeffrey's testified, right?
Correct.
Okay, so the vision of the master plan for this parcel was park, and your amendments are against park, therefore, this.
No, they're not.
Are inconsistent with the master plan.
I will reiterate that there is a public open space requirements and a recreation facility requirement as part of this amendment. And that those are effectuating the master plan and the land use map to which you've brought up.
Okay, so if we put 500 apartment buildings in the middle of Liberty State Park, but they had a lawn and a gym, the way you define open space, that would still be a park.
Is that a question?
Yeah. Would that still be a park? Because it has landscaped, you know, entrances and a gym inside. Would that be your definition of park?
Matt, can you even answer that question?
No, and it wasn't a question the first time he said it.
So are you, are you telling us today that the proposed residential development plan is consistent with the land use map, which calls for open space, even though it's a 17-story building with 400 units? Because it has a white box, 20,000 recreation gym, and some landscaping of a lawn or something?
So to reiterate the key recommendation of the Recreation Open Space Master Plan from 2008, we are working closely with private developers to construct new parks and recreation areas.
Okay, so you can't answer, you can't answer that question, that the.
I just answered that question. That was a very clear answer, if I, if I could interject an opinion.
In the, did you want to address any of the other areas that I brought up in the master plan?
You have to ask questions, counsel.
I just asked a question.
I don't remember. I don't remember them. If you want to bring them up again, I can, I'll feel the question.
Okay. Let's talk about page three, the land use objectives of volume one.
Okay.
Is there a listing of goals there that are for, that are supposed to be achieved in the master plan?
You're asking me what the content is on a page randomly selected and pulled from the master plan?
I'm not, no, it's not random. I'm talking about some of the goals. So for example, it talks about shrinking of the city's industrial base is the third bullet point there.
Do you want to share the document?
Yeah, you can, you have the ability to put it up on the screen if you want. The green button at the bottom.
Counsel, what's market? It's going to be, it's going to be one. Identify the document, counsel.
This is the master plan.
Okay, what page?
Page, volume one, page three.
Thank you much. Does it have a date?
It's the master plan. I think it was 2000, right? So going back to page three. Try to find it. Give me a second.
Be dizzy, counsel.
Yeah, I took it down. I had it when I tried to find a date for you. One second.
Spinning.
It's not, I'm not sharing it now, right?
No, you're not. Just click the green button again. And go through the prompt.
Let the record reflect, it's 10:00 PM.
Totally noted, Santo. This probably would be our last application of the night.
Okay, do you see this section I have on the screen, Matt?
I see it.
Okay.
Page three is, it's been identified. Thank you.
Let's take a look. It says I won.
Oh, I won. I won.
Mr. Matt Sakounis, we cannot see the entire page. It seems to be zoomed in on a portion of the page. I don't know if that's what you said.
Yeah, that's helpful. Yeah.
Okay, so this is, this part here is that there's goals that are for the master plan, right?
I can't see the heading, Mr. Matt Sakounis. Thank you.
Okay. Do you see that the third bullet point, shrinking of the city's industrial base?
Yes.
Am I correct in saying that losing industrial opportunities was a goal, was, was a problem that the master plan identified?
It identified that I think this is just a starting point, but.
Question, but if you did, you can answer it.
See. Is, so your question is what again?
Did this third bullet point, shrinking of the city's industrial base, does this reflect that the master plan identified losing industry as a problem to be addressed in the master plan?
Yeah, that's what it says. The first step in developing goals and objectives was the identification of issues. Once issues were identified, goals and objectives were established. Key issues are as follows, and yes, that third point is shrinking of the city's industrial base. And I touched upon, I think, that issue in the economic development objectives that I highlighted for the board tonight.
Okay, so. Some, some testimony and some people have commented that industry is sort of a very negative thing, but the master plan, am I correct in saying that the master plan does not envision industrial uses as a negative?
I do not know. It actually might be more contextual than that in its recommendations.
Okay, and, but removing an industrial use from this parcel, wouldn't that be inconsistent with this goal of the master plan? Because it would actually exacerbate the shrinking of the city's industrial base?
Well, first of all, it's not removing the industrial zoning. But if the amendment is utilized through future redevelopment, there are numerous other economic development objectives that it does effectuate. One being to support and promote brownfield redevelopment to return vacant and underutilized properties to productive use, to promote and develop a diversified economy that will increase employment, strengthen the tax base, and protect the city against cyclical downturns, encourage appropriate development in neighborhoods and in citywide activity focus areas to provide provide an equitable distribution of jobs and services, and retain existing small businesses and attract new small businesses. Lastly, when maybe not least important, actually probably the most important, that this amendment does encourage the creation of minority-owned businesses through available support programs.
Okay, but it's inconsistent to the extent it's losing industrial base, which the master plan seeks to preserve. Can you agree with that? Yes or no?
No, because it's vacant and underutilized.
Well, for future use, I suppose that any, any land then that would be vacant and underutilized, but I'm talking about the, the use itself. Do you have the master plan in front of you by any chance, Matt?
I do not.
Okay, well, I put on the record some of the areas that I think are inconsistent, instead of walking through each one with you. And I want to just go to one, in specific one, again, which is the scale of the housing in the neighborhood. Would you agree that the master plan says that new housing should be of the scope and density of the neighborhood as we understand the term neighborhood and common usage in the English language?
It does say that. At the same time, it says, provide high-density residential and walking distance to light rail stations and bus stops, which I believe is one of the objectives that I quoted tonight. In so many words.
With regard to that, it's, with regard to being high-density near light rail, maybe that's consistent. But you would agree that the size, scope, density, height of this project is not consistent with the character of the immediate neighborhood, and therefore, at least in that regard, it's inconsistent with the master plan.
Well, it is consistent with the existing and underlying zoning and the fact that it is resulting in public open space. And because of that public open space, it is sculpting and further defining the bulk that is permitted in the amendment.
Okay. So yes, let me understand something. I just asked you if the density, size, scope, and height of this project is inconsistent with the existing housing in the immediate neighborhood. And you went on to justifying it because of the open space. My question is much more simple. Can you agree with me? Yes or no? That the density, height, size, and scope of this project is out of scope with the existing houses? Yes or no? Yes or no?
Counsel, the question is about amendments. Are the amendments that permit the density, height and scope inconsistent?
Thank you for putting the question like that. Yeah, that's right. Santo's question is right.
Is the density, height and scope of the amendment inconsistent with the existing homes?
Yeah, in the neighborhood.
They are, they are not the same.
Okay, and therefore that element of the master plan that says that new residential development should be consistent with existing housing stock is being violated. This is an inconsistency with the master plan.
Yes, but fixed rail is fixed. So distance from a light rail station is discrete. It is not. It is not something that we can conjure. It is within walking distance of a light rail station. Therefore, the other objective of the redevelopment plan seems to be much more, should be weighted much more heavily as in, that results in locating high density residential within walking distance of mass transit.
Okay, you mentioned open spaces as that, as this is being a positive element of this development, making it consistent with the master plan, right?
Correct, as you pointed out in the land use map.
Right. And wouldn't you agree that if the city went forward with its initial plan to make this fully part of Berry Lane Park, that that objective of the master plan would have been met even more?
As in, yes, I guess it would be. But it's not as though the amendment is not effectuating the master plan.
Okay, I, I want to say for the record, and I don't think you're going to be able to answer this question. But I will put this, I'd like to put this on the record, Santa, as a question that I think the board should consider. And I say this respectfully to all the members of the board and to the chairman. My reading of the judge's opinion, it differs from Mr. Alompi's in that I believe he concluded that the record did not adequately reflect why the change in permitted use as embodied in the amendments are superior to the uses that are allowed in the existing amendments and which clearly called for the extension of Berry Lane Park. And I think that unless we know and the board understands a few basic things such as what the cost of that land would have been to acquire for the city, what Lumont, the developer is paying for that property, what happened to the grant monies, without knowing those facts, I don't think you're making a fully informed decision in deciding to let the city engage in this radical departure, no matter how it's couched tonight, from what was envisioned for this parcel of land. So I would ask that we saw a land use map that calls for this piece of the land to be open space and park, not a 17-story building. To me, I submit to you that that is an inconsistency with the master plan and an inconsistency with the vision for this land. And before you give the developer the right to do that, you should know whether or not the acquisition of this plan was truly not doable for the city. Otherwise, I think you're making an arbitrary decision. So I would only ask then, you know, this to you, Matt, do you, do you have the capability or the understanding or, or, or do you know what the designated developer is going to pay for this property?
No.
Okay.
But I do want to go back to what you just said and maybe correct the answer to your previous question. So you said, is this, if we do acquire, if the city does acquire this lot and makes it completely open space, does that best effectuate the master plan? And I would say to the best question, no, because that would be putting that goal of creating more open space ahead, which is just on a map in the ma- master plan redevelopment plan, ahead of all these other objectives and key recommendations that I, I laid out tonight. Inclusionary housing, minority owned business creation, disadvantaged persons enterprises creation, business creation, public open space. Now you may not know it, but Green Acres doesn't really allow us to have interior facilities. This is creating a recreation facility that the city is in desperate need of. One of the recommendations that's going to come out of the new public, open space element that will be up for adoption in January is that the city should not prioritize acquisition. This is the findings of the consultants. And that it should put funds into the upgrade and upkeep of existing open space. And that has yet to be opined upon by the planning board, so it has not been adopted. But that was one of the findings that will be presented to the board.
Why was the master plan pulled from the, from this meeting?
To hear your application, counsel.
Okay.
It's 10:15. I still got another seven items on the agenda. I only say that because that's the reason.
I only know when I was brought up to speak, so if you stop interrupting me, maybe I can get to the questions.
I'm waiting for questions, counsel.
Matt, you mentioned inclusionary affordable housing as one of the benefits of this, of this project, right?
That's correct. It's a requirement.
Project. Calling a project, the, the amendments that are before us tonight. Isn't it true that the IZO, the inclusionary zoning ordinance that is being considered almost simultaneously by the city along with these amendments would mandate 10% affordable housing for the types of changes that are being sought here if it was in effect?
Which IZO are you talking about? The one from 2020 or the one that's going now?
I said the one that's under consideration, the one that's going now.
Well, this is a remount. We're here to look at the amendments that were passed by the board in 2020.
Well, it was 2021, I think, right? But was it 2020? I don't even know. I think it was 2021. Okay, but, but ba- but basically the IZO would mandate twice as much affordable housing if the, if that gets passed as we anticipate it will in the coming weeks. And these plans were brought forward at a date after that, this developer would be mandated to provide 10% affordable housing, right?
Counsel, that calls for speculation.
Not really. It, it calls for, depending if the ordinance does. No, it doesn't. It requires reading, it requires reading a document and applying it to this. There's nothing to speculate about.
Absolute speculation. The ordinance hasn't been adopted, has it?
Well, then maybe the planning board should wait a few weeks and see if it gets passed, because then.
So you can ask your question?
I wouldn't have to ask it then. Then we would know. I mean, basically, by, by passing this amendment tonight, you're sacrificing a substantial amount of affordable housing instead of waiting a few weeks.
It's a remount. The amendment is what it was, what, what it was voted on in 2020.
Are you, is it your understanding, and Santo can, can chime in, that when there's a remand, that the city is mandated to go forward again to the council? Or don't you have the wherewithal to go start over from scratch if you wanted to?
We've been ordered by the court to hear the consistency of the proposed amendment with the master plan. That's what this proceeding is all about. No matter how much you want to make it about anything else, that's what this proceeding is about. Based on the lawsuit that you brought challenging those amendments. That's why we're here.
Yeah, I understand that, although I disagree with that characterization, but Santo, you're not saying that the city and the planning department and the administration doesn't have the wherewithal to say, you know what, it's been remanded. We've decided to change now. There's no mandate for the city to move forward with this, right?
There's a court order to conduct the remand hearing, which is what we are doing.
I'll wrap it up in a couple minutes and turn it over to other speakers.
Take your time, counsel, and I did not want you to believe that my comment before regarding the agenda meant anything about how long this proceeding takes.
That's exactly how I took it.
I know you did. It was meant to say to you as well as the public, things get moved off agendas because there's other very important things to handle, such as court ordered remands. This is, this was remanded back in the end of September.
You, Matt, you mentioned designated developer before, and that the designation is, 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 is a key to unlocking the capability of, of achieving some of the permitted uses in the amendments. Is that right?
They cannot utilize the amendment unless they're designated and fulfill the requirements of the zoning, which are detailed performance and community benefits, performance standards and community benefits.
So why, why is it significant that the developer be designated? And when we say designated, that means designated underneath the loud local housing redevelopment law by Jersey City Development C, right?
Correct.
Okay, so why, why is that important that the developer be designated?
The, an RDA, which stands for Redevelopers Agreement, is the correct vehicle to tie the development to certain performance standards and timelines and community benefits. They will also not be able to dispose of the property or, or sell the property or transfer title without approval by the JCRI. So it is, it's, it's an attempt to ensure that those community benefits are delivered in a timely fashion.
Counsel, do you have further questions?
No, I think I'm, I'm thinking I'm done. I just wanted to make sure to miss the, something there. How about I turn it over to Renee? And since she said I have time, I may have one more, but won't be more than that, but I'll turn it over to Renee as a few questions.
Ms. Steinhagen, you're muted. Did you?
I'm going to try to be really short here. I had no intention of doing any cross-examination before, but Matt has said certain things that I just want to ask him. Matt, listening to your presentation, it was very clear to me that most of the benefits and the consistencies that you found had to do with the recreational aspects of this project as well as the incubator that is going to go into the existing building that's actually on the site and the idea of open space, et cetera. When you went through the consistency, I did not hear, there, there might have been, but I would, I just want to ask, isn't a majority of the consistency in the goals you found had to do with the non-residential aspects of this site? The way it's being proposed to be developed?
Well, housing is one component, which I did address, which.
So I know you addressed it, but I, you went through quite a number of job, the job creation, the recreation, the open space, and I, I was just listening to all of these things that you were saying were consistent. And they seem to be related not to the creation of residential. There was that aspect, and there was that aspect you said about inclusionary zoning. I mean, affordable housing. But a good majority of the consistencies had to do with the creation of the recreation center, the open space, the incubation of the, I guess you were talking about in this, in the existing building that's going to be incubating, and maybe you were implying job creation, job training, all things that have nothing to do with the structure of the building, they have to do with what the intent of the use, but those were the things. And I just want to confirm that a good majority of the consistency come from those aspects of the project.
Is that a compliment or?
I'm asking, can you just agree? The question is not a, I'm just trying to get from you that a majority of the consistencies came from those aspects of the proposed project.
Right, housing is one thing, open space is one thing. The neighborhood commercial facility is one thing. There are more other one things than housing. I don't know if that's.
Okay, all right. But I wanted to.
By the question, there's more other things than housing, so there's, maybe it sounds like there's more other things.
All right. But when I was listening to that, I was hearing all these, you know, various parts of the goals, and I wanted to say those things, though, aren't they all uses that are currently permitted on that site?
No, incubators are actually not permitted on, in the Berry Lane area of the industrial zone.
But there are, my understanding is because the plans were to have like a hydroponic farm, there were plans to have certain types of light industry and activity, business generating entrepreneurial training of people on that site with the current zoning.
I'm not familiar with that history.
Okay, so I have a basic question. Why is there a rezoning of the entire site? When I would say a good two thirds of this, only a third of the site is being used for residential?
Counsel, again, it's an amendment to a redevelopment plan. Let's not use the term.
Okay, but the, the, the current plan calls for certain uses that we traditionally identify with zoning, and I'm sorry, I'm not an experienced land use lawyer, but in my mind, there's uses, primary uses, accessory uses, permitted uses. And right now, there's a, there is a, the whole site is being changed to allow residential commercial with, I guess, permitted uses being the park and the recreation, et cetera. And I'm just asking if residential is only going on a third of the site, why are we changing the site for the, why are we changing the uses for the entire site?
So that we can ensure the delivery and effectuation of the master plan through the creation of public open space, the community, the neighborhood community, a commercial facility and the recreation center, as well as the preservation of the Steel Tech Head. as well as the preservation of the Steel Tech head house and the public parking for that recreation center and the general public.
But in order to, just you, I might not understand, but in, why couldn't have those goals, what you just said, been allowed permitted uses on the current, in the current plan? Those uses, everything but the residential, but the uses you said, wouldn't have those been permitted in the current plan?
Matt, do you understand the question?
No, I don't. I don't understand the question.
Okay, I can't make myself clear. There were just several reasons that he said, and I just thought all of those uses were permitted under the current plan. Um, so I did hear you saying, and this is my only one question, and I'll, I mean, flowing from this, you, you said something in your original presentation that really the reason for the seventeen story and the density, that was a function of the requirement for the community benefits. And that you really highlighted, you said to Bill at least three times in your answers to him, the goal about working with private public and having private developers develop the recreation and the park space, et cetera. Um, so I just want to confirm, is that true? That the density that's being permitted here is a direct result of the need to have this developer develop this community space and open space and recreation space, et cetera?
As I understand it, yes.
So we have a trade off here. We have a trade off for density of the housing for the community benefits going on in this plan. Is that correct?
Yes, as, as allowed under the local redevelopment and housing law, whereas you might be commu- uh, confusing that with regular zones.
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to, I'm not making a legal conclusion. I'm just trying to get a factual that you've said it's a trade off. Okay.
And redevelopment plans, community benefits are allowed.
Yes, now I know they are allowed, and uh, I, I know that they are allowed, but we also have here the five percent minimum affordable units. And that too, the question is whether that five percent minimum affordable units was also part of the trade off for the community benefits.
So we prioritize the history of this site, uh, which was highlighted by some of the questions from Mr. Masekutis uh, with regard to the land use map. Uh, this area was, uh, and identified as, uh, open space or future to be open space. Uh, but it's privately held, um, and the city has not acquired it. Uh, so that history, that goal, um, was prioritized and effectuating the master plan in the writing of these amendments. Uh, and the housing objectives that we highlighted for you were also incorporated, and that's how we ended up with an inclusionary housing requirement in this amendment.
But isn't it also true that another court has found that you can trade off inclusionary housing requirements for community benefits?
That's with regards to regular zoning.
Okay, I'll just leave it as such.
Which I think is an incorrect read of that ordinance, but we're, we've abandoned that ordinance and are adopting a new one.
That does not allow for a trade off with community benefits.
Yeah, but.
Bill, do you, I'm, I'm finished.
Jeremy.
Mr. Masekutis, anything else? No, I, I've, uh, I've no more questions for Matt. Thanks, Matt, for, uh, interfacing with me there. Thanks, Chairman, for letting me talk.
You got it. Anytime.
Good to see you, Bill.
Um, okay, Mr. Shaljan, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, I don't. I stand on, uh, Mr. Ward's testimony.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mike, do you want to take five before we open it up to public comment?
Oh, sure. Thanks.
Okay, yeah, let's take five, everybody. It's, uh, ten thirty-three. We'll be back at ten thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Alright, everybody, it's ten thirty-eight. Let's come to order again if we could. I'm sorry, guys, I'm, I'm muted. Um, if we could, let's come to order again. I've been talking for like three minutes. And we're gonna open it up to public at this time. Uh, Santo, do you want to once again, go over ground rules on public on who's represented by who?
So anybody that's represented by Mr. Masekutis, which means anybody that is a member of the Morris Canal redevelopment area, community development corp is not going to be allowed to comment. They comment through Mr. Masekutis. So if you are a member, we're gonna put you under oath. We're gonna ask you if you're a member. And we're going to expect everybody to not lie. So if you are a member of the Morris Canal redevelopment area, community development corporation, uh, you'll defer to Mr. Masekutis. Everybody else, they are welcome to comment.
Okay, with that, let's open it up for public. Anybody that wishes to comment, please raise your hand. And once again, if you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. I see.
Promoting Erica.
Be, they have to be limited to the consistency with the master.
Uh, one moment, uh, Santo, you might want to say that again, since Erica, I think, was just being promoted. She might not have heard that.
So the comments, the comments have to be limited to consistency with the master plan. So let's have the member of the public state her name for the record.
My name is Erica Walker.
This is Walker. You had a question? Uh, um, you've been sworn in, uh, sworn in already tonight, and, um, are you a member of the Morris Canal Community Corporation?
I am not.
Okay, thank you. We have five minutes for you.
Alright, and for the record, um, the second time I raised my hand earlier was to state that, um, was to state that the board could, uh, accept, uh, Mrs. Pat, um, Patton's position as my own. Um, I stated that I would be reading and then was allowed to continue my test of, um, testimony, so.
Understood, and, and that's my mistake. We should have stopped you at that point, that you were testifying, you know, with someone else's words, but this five minutes is all yours.
Thank you.
Alright.
Um, uh, second, I also raised my hand to state that the chat was disabled to the public. We can see a couple of the items that are in the chat, but we cannot utilize it. Um, but
I just, I did stop your time real quick. Uh, the chat isn't part of the public record.
Okay.
So that's, that's nothing that, you know, legally we can use here. Uh, we do post the, the adjourned items, the carried items, that type of thing, but it's not part of public record. Our court reporter does not have access to that. Um, and frankly, he couldn't do those two things at the same time. So that's why that's not a legal record on there.
Okay, well, only because earlier in this evening, it was referenced, and I, when I went to the chat, I would see nothing, it would be blank, but it was referenced earlier, so I felt like there were things, items in the chat that wasn't made available. Um, also, um, to just clarify things like the aforementioned, you know, I wanted to let the record reflect that you could accept Mrs. Patton's decision as my own. Um, so and, and, and there are, you know, I have friends raising their hands that are not being seen, so to let, you know, for communication purposes, to let you know, hey, I'm, I'm raised, maybe you
I, I just, I mean, obviously you can't see what I'm pointing to, but my box with all the attendees is right there, and, you know, as soon as a hand pops up, I do recognize it. Um, and I, I even, you know, hold it out for that motion to be made and seconded to close public. I waited the last possible minute. Um, it's, it's important to me that I hear from everybody, really is.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm starting your clock.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, I am a, a resident of Jersey City, born and raised here. Uh, I think that this is important for me and my peers. Um, affordability is important to me and my peers as, um, it's, this, the city is becoming less and less affordable to people who were born and raised here. Um, this deal was done under the framework of the current IZO, um, which is unlawful. Um, we're not against, I'm not against, um, residential, but I am against seventeen stories. What does the master plan say about height and density? Um, it seems like we're allowing this, um, repurposing, and, um, for lack of saying rezoning, uh, being allowed to say rezoning. Uh, we're allowing this adjustment for this developer. Suppose he walks away, um, our others afforded, um, the same benefits, um, amendments. The proposed amendments of the Morris Canal redevelopment plan would change the permitted use of the three acre property located at four seventeen Communipate Avenue from industrial and park uses to allow for a massive seventeen story mixed use building with more than four hundred luxury residential units, uh, only five of, percent of which are being made affordable. Fourteen thousand square feet of rent retail space in a neighborhood of one and two family homes. Um, as is, there's, there's no need to upzone or amend the three plus acres because two thirds of the property is already allocated. Um, I would also like to propose the question, why can't the owner do ten percent affordable housing? Uh, if, if it's about benefiting the community, uh, the community would greatly benefit for, uh, from additional affordable housing being made available. Um, the current community can benefit. I'm not talking about future newcomers from out of town and out of state. Um, if the reasons why you can't do ten percent is economic, will show us your pro forma. Let's look at the RDA. Let's, let, the public deserves a right to see the numbers. Um, what is not paying for the land? What are the construction costs? If we can understand the expenses, uh, and, and then we can understand the affordability, and we can understand that plan, and you know, why more units can't be made affordable. Um, the IZO that the city is about to pass would require ten percent affordable housing, right? Like, let's, I mean, can we do what's right for the people? We, we, we know five percent isn't enough. Um, the IZO also, um, contradicts was being done by this ordinance, um, offering community benefits instead of the affordable housing, um, recreation and open space instead of affordable housing. It's how can the city pass these amendments while also still considering this new IZO that directly refutes the policy underlying the amendments before the board, um, trading and bargaining extras for less affordable housing? Uh, we, we, we shouldn't stand for it, and we should really represent the need, the needs of the people and not the wants of developers' pockets. Um, that's my two cents, and thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Walker. We appreciate it. Okay, uh, anybody else, please raise your hands. And again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Chairman, just a reminder to all the members of the public that want to speak, the comments are to be limited to the testimony from Mr. Ward regarding consistency with the master plan and Mr. Masekutis's cross examination.
Thank you, counsel. Alright, anybody else from public?
Promoting Rolando Lavaro.
How's it going, Councilman? Uh, you just confirmed that you're still under oath?
Confirm.
And if you could, just state and spell your name.
Uh, my name is Rolando, R-O-L-A-N-D-O, last name Lavaro, L-A-V-A-R-R-O.
My name is Rolando, R O L A N D O, last name Lavaro, L A V A R R O.
Councilman, good evening once again, and the floor is yours for as long as you need it.
Councilman, just before you make your comment, obviously this matter will be before you on the council, so.
It will not. But I appreciate that. Maybe I'll hang around. Who knows? Who knows a little? But um, so, so, and actually, that's one of the questions I wanted to ask. I don't know if you'll answer my question there is, should this be approved by, or whatever the the recommendation of the planning board? What further actions will be taken? Will it come before the city council? And if so, in what form will it come as an ordinance with two readings or in some other form?
It will go back in front of the council. I'll defer to corporation counsel with respect to how it will proceed there. But yes, it will. If voted favorably, go to city council.
Okay, I'll just make.
Matter, but yes, it will go to city council.
Okay. I will just make a few comments. I'll be brief. Staying consistent with the, the with the testimony that was given and for the, by the court's directions of the remanding. The, I think the as was raised by Mr. Matsakoudis, and I believe I'm Steinhegen as well, the idea that that the permitted uses here, the, the, the master plan land use map. And I didn't, I wasn't looking at the screen at the time, but I assumed that there was a map that was presented that that master land use map indicates that the area block 18901 lots 23 and 29 are parks slash open space. And I think it should be noted and that the, the planning board members should note that that that's inconsistent with what's designated as the land use district for the master plan land use map. And even though that wasn't that inconsistency is not addressed, I think it should be noted for the record that, that there, that Mr. Matsakoudis noted that and I'll echo that that statement as well, that it's inconsistent. It appears to me to be inconsistent with the land use district map as well. And it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that when you do make a recommendation, whatever that should be, that any inconsistency should also be addressed to the city council. And while the planning office and staff and attorneys may not see it as an inconsistency, I would hope that it would be addressed in the report that the inconsistencies brought by the, by Mr. Matsakoudis and Ms. Steinhegen, as well as the public, that they also be addressed as inconsistencies in the report to the city council when it, when it finally does arrive there. The second thing I just want to point out is the, the height 17 story building, the mass 2000 master plan. I think the attorney for the planning board noted that it was 700 voluminous pages. And that the master plan, it's my understanding that it contemplates five to six stories for this area and the surrounding area around block 18901 lots 23 and 29. And so that, that should be noted as an inconsistency too. And I don't know how the, the planning board gets around not at least addressing that inconsistency. It is not a small inconsistency. It's a big inconsistency and that there is a negative impact on the surrounding community, which communities have noted in the past. The, the last point I wanted to make was that while there was a lot of attention given by planning staff about the goals and objectives and the consistency therein. I'm not sure what the 700 page document, pages to the document are for the master plan. I'm assuming the reference is to the 2000 master plan. I went to the website just this evening to look at it and I believe it was a volume one of the 2000 master plan was 340 pages. And volume two was 76 pages. And there were numbers of other documents listed there, amendments and other things like that, that I didn't count the pages. But inside of all of that, those over 400 plus pages, 16 pages of that document, I believe it's the first 16 pages are related to the to the, the goal and the objectives of the master plan. The, the presentation regarding the consistency to the master plan does not speak to the other near over 400 pages that are addressed within that and those pages that refer specifically to this block 18901 lot 23 and 29. And in particular to the to the Morris Canal area as well. And so with that, I'll conclude my remarks and just reiterate my request that, that any such report that, that's advanced to, to the city council, that it include those inconsistencies and, and the planning board's response to those sort of inconsistencies, whether they, even if it says much to say that they, they do not agree that they are inconsistencies. If it's their, their opinion that it's not inconsistencies, because I think you'll find that the public, as well as this councilman, do find them to be inconsistencies. And this city and this planning board may find itself again in court to, to dispute those, those assertions if they, if they determine that these are not inconsistencies and it's not, in fact, documented in the appropriate report. And with that, I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, councilman. Have a good night.
Good night.
All right, anybody else? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. And once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Once again, anybody else? Okay, we have a.
Promoting Councilman-elect Gilmore.
We got you, elect. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, and if you could confirm for us that you have been sworn in tonight and you are still under. Okay.
Yeah.
Now, we have five minutes for you.
And councilman, just before you speak, again, same as for the prior councilman, this matter will go before the council one way or the other. So I just tell you that so that you understand.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Um, I guess, uh, it just seems as though as, as we go further and further, it's just so much uncertainty with respect to if we're following the exact master plan from 2000. In fact, Matt, Matt testified when, when he was speaking with, on the cross examining, when Bill was speaking with him, that it does not seem to be consistent with the, with the general area. And I'm very familiar with that area over there as it relates to this type of establishments in there. It's pretty much an area composed of one and two families or there sporadically. There are some bigger dwellings over there. And I, I just think that when, when these projects are, are being brought forward, that they just have to be real careful and considerate circumstances taking place as it relates to exactly what's going on. I understand this developer is providing a lot of community give backs. Um, so when we're looking at if it's consistent with the master plan as it relates to these community give backs, then we have to really weigh when this business incubator is set to have black and minority businesses coming in, that we, we're, we're, we're focusing that it's, it's, I believe it's 40% of that commercial space and it's for amount of 10 years and then the affordable, affordable units, which is 5% is capped at the 30 year, the 30 year threshold. Um, it is, is so many perplexing and puzzling things with regards to, to this project. And even the remand, from what I'm hearing, there is some certainty. I mean, there is some uncertainty as it relates to. Well, I'll say this, from what I'm hearing from the board, they feel as though that they were very clear and consistent as it relates to this being aligned with the master plan, although the court felt I don't know, too much to the contrary, but enough to remain it back for clarification. So just in light of all of that, again, I just don't understand what, what is the rush to push these huge projects through? It's going to affect us for eternity. So I, again, as the councilman-elect for whatever, I just can't not support this current project in its current form. And to my latter point with respect to if this is truly in line with the master plan and there is a lot of give backs attached to this, we, we need to see the finances, right? We need to see if these community give backs are essentially community give backs. And, and once the finances are seen, then we can be able to make educated guess or more informed guess as it relates to are these real community give backs? Because on the surface, it can seem like, you know, the developer is really doing his due diligence and his best as it relates to providing all of these amenities, rec centers and other community give backs. And again, I'm, I'm not saying that this developer is a bad person. All I'm saying is these, these huge projects need to be like looked at through a magnifying glass. And we just want to make sure that we're really doing the best we could do as it relates to, you know, being honest and being transparent with residents in the community. That's, so that's all I wanted to say. And I just want the record to reflect that as the new councilman-elect, I cannot support this project in its current form. And there needs to be more dialogue, more communication and, you know, more transparency as it relates to this project in totality. And I would really like to see when this is sent back to city council, despite how, how the board votes on it tonight, what form will it be sent back in? That's, that's, that's something that's that I really want to see and, and also brings, excuse me, raises more concern as it relates to approving this project in its current form. So I do want to just thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Councilman-elect. And I look forward to the next four years with you.
Yes.
Okay, we still have a couple of hands raised. Let's promote people.
Bringing up phone number that ends in 4175.
And I believe you press what? Star six to?
Yes.
Enable talking. If you could, please press star six. And you'll be able to talk. And that's for a phone number ending in 4175.
That's you, John. Star six. There you go.
There you go.
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
And just before you make a comment, I want to swear you in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? Will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
It will be the truth.
And could you state your name for me, please?
With difficulty. It's John B. Frohling. F R O H L I N G.
Thank you.
And I live at 901 Summit Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey. I moved to Jersey City in 1991 and I have been a volunteer to various parks, Gordon Park, park where I live near this park.
And I've also. You just. One second.
Yes.
This is Chairman Langston. You have five minutes to speak. I'm gonna start your timer now.
Okay, I've also served as a volunteer to Berry Lane Park. I think one thing that I didn't hear tonight, it should be recognized, is the effort that the volunteers put in to create this park. That's Ms. June Jones and a person that worked for the city, Elizabeth. So we're able to argue about the right use of this area because of those people. But having said that, I did write a letter, which I, I'm unfortunately 90 years old and I'm not really good at these new computers. So you may not have gotten it and may not get it till tomorrow. But in that letter, I told about the volunteer work that I've done over the years since I moved to Jersey City and particularly in the area of the parks. That's, and I still do that with a park near where I live in our district. I look at this project and I, I, I know Mr. Ward well professionally. I know how competent he is. And I know that he put a presentation with a lot of details. I think he hits the small points, but misses the big picture on this particular project. I thought the presentation of Mr. Matsakoudis showing the inconsistencies with the master plan shows the defect of the thought process. This, and I conclude in my letter that this project is hopefully at a style of the neighborhood. The most important consideration is the neighborhood. There's a major problem on reconciling gentrification and development, very difficult to solve. Everybody wants development. There's always a cost for development. And this is such a stark departure from the environment in which it's situated. And I know nothing but good things about the promoter of this project. So it's not a personal thing, but it's in the wrong place. And this 17 stories is completely at odds with the surrounding neighborhood. And although Mr. I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name, but the people that cited the points were all technical points. And they missed the flavor of the city. The city has been the most beautiful thing about this city. It's, it's diversity and it's welcoming. I grew up in Princeton, lived in Montclair and Grand Ridge. So I lived in a lot of lovely places. This is the best city I've ever lived in because of that simple understanding about people getting along. You're locating in a residential, medium to lower class neighborhood. A completely out of style project. And I think it takes much more thought. And I think you should unfortunately reject this project. And I do appreciate very much your time. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Frohling. Okay, we have Mr. Perez's hand raised. Can we promote him?
Promoting Mr. Perez.
Hey, Chris. You'll confirm you're still under oath and everything?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm starting your timer now, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. So I just wanted to make a couple of points about the Morris Canal redevelopment plan. Mr. Matsakoudis made a statement about the, I guess, the reduction or the loss of Jersey City's industrial zoned areas. And if you look at the Morris Canal redevelopment plan map, it seems that there are like sort of four specific areas that are zoned industrial. There's the Todd North, the Todd South, the industrial area that revolves itself around Berry Lane Park and the industrial. And the industrial area, uh, just kind of north of the junction Johnston Bishop, uh, State Street, Cornellison. And all of these areas seem to be being amended for residential use. And if you look at, I believe it's page ten. Of the redevelopment plan, it goes to kind of reiterate, uh, what Mr. Masekutis was talking about. In terms of the loss of industrial space, um, or areas in Jersey City. Uh, so here we are on page ten. Um, section five strategic plan of the redevelopment plan. Uh, section G, industrial retention and attraction. And it basically says here, a comprehensive strategy for industrial retention and attraction can assist Jersey City. In the strengthening of its industrial base and the resulting benefits. Um, one of the concerns I have is that these areas of Jersey City, um, have been industrial in the past. Uh, they have created, uh, work opportunities for the community. And little by little, they are going away. So my concern is rezoning this to another use. Is that really the best thing? Um, so that's one question that I have. Uh, as in the Morris Canal redevelopment area. The industrial areas are diminishing as time progresses. Uh, and these are the last pieces that have any chance of being maintained as industrial. Um, the second concern that I have is, um, I see myself observing a situation. Uh, where people are telling people what they need. I've lived in this community for fifteen years. And, um, I'm very much engrossed in the community here as if I was born and grew up here. And I know very well, and you, many of you know me as a community, um, advocate. Um, I listen to what my community needs and what they want. And I've observed this whole process over the past year and change. And here we are talking about community give backs and how they align with, uh, the master plan or the redevelopment plan. But once again, I will say that I feel like we are telling the community what they need. And what I'm hearing from the community is what they need. And a component of the master plan is affordable housing. And over and over again, I'm hearing that. Housing is a real issue. Uh, this site is on the border of two census tracts where thirty percent or more of the residents. Are below the poverty level. Housing and affordability is of utmost concern. So I'm wondering if these community give backs in exchange for this density are the right give backs? And should we not be maybe engaging more with the community and not just telling people what they need, but asking people what they need? We have a habit of doing that in this world. And I think that we need to go back to the community. And do a better assessment of what the community needs are in exchange for any sort of, uh, changes in the zoning. Uh, as Mr. Gilmore said a little while ago. We're talking about a small business incubator that expires after ten years. Whereas the changes to the plan are in perpetuity in terms of the benefits to the developer. Um, so those are some real concerns that I have. And I tried my best to stick to what the redevelopment area and the master plan dictates. Um, and listening to this whole conversation tonight, it's a little scary as to how a lot of things contradict themselves. Which makes me think that maybe we all should be advocating for the city to make some serious. Um, investigation of what these plans say, because if one half says this and one half says that, then what the hell are we doing? Um, and that that's basically all I have to say this evening. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time. All right, I have, uh, Mr. Verhovski. Hello again, Val. Just, uh, if you could confirm that you're still under oath?
I confirm.
Thank you very much. Okay, sir, we have five minutes for you.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Um, I, I, I appreciate all the comments I have been hearing and I really try to engage myself. Um, and listen to everything that's going on within the community. Um, and all the speakers have mentioned the needs of the community. Um, and and this entirety. Um, what I find troubling is that I feel that. There's an allocation to one particular need. And housing affordability is definitely one of them for sure. But I feel that many other attributes are being ignored. And this, um, amendment feel like outlines. The greater need for the community. And I feel like the community in large is is really, no one has spoken to everyone in the community. I'm in the community. And when I found out there'd be a recreation center built within a few blocks of my home. I, for one, was very excited for it. Again, I'm in the community. Um, and I feel excited that my child would have a recreation center to go to. I know in speaking to my neighbors as as part of of my association. And speaking to, uh, my, my direct neighbors and and my black and blacks nearby. Recreation is a desperate need for Ward F and Jersey City as a whole. I, for one, was extremely excited. The fact that there will be recreation, the fact that the long neglected lot. That is definitely an eyesore will be transformed where one could walk safely. From Communipaw Avenue into Barreling Park where we participate in the, um. Recreation activities such as basketball activity, the soccer activity, the football activity. Um, and the fact that would add to the park, the recreation center. I would argue that this adds the need and the basis of the. Requirement altogether for the park and the recreation of this area. Is the need for, uh, Green City's recreation, which I honestly think that this recreation, this. Uh, proposal, uh, outlines perfectly. I really do agree with everything Matt outlined perfectly. I do think that. Um, the proposal outlines every need and requirement. And I, for one, as being in the community, I've lived here for several, several years. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm an owner, I'm taxpayer, um, I'm committed to the neighborhood. Um, at large. And I have to say that I, I really think that there, there's desperately, there's a lot of needs in the community for sure. Uh, uh, affordable housing is definitely one, and I'm very happy for, uh, for the mills to to to. Create affordable housing, which was, it stands still for many years and et cetera. But again, you know, I, I feel like this is a good proposal. And speaking of the immediate location, where this proposal is, there is no, uh, single family or. Um, a, a two-family housing. Literally in the immediate location, there's abandoned factories and open lots and then the park. So I would argue that this really complements the park. I think it complements, uh, what the. Um, main perspective and the idea or the direction that the, uh, provision. Uh, was set from the, from the get-go. Is to create recreation, open space, which I think this achieves it. So I hope and pray that this does proceed forward. And, um, I thank you very much for, for hearing me out. Um, have a good evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Okay, we have a Mr. Griffin with his hand raised. Promoting Mr. Griffin. How's it going, Mr. Griffin?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I could see you kind of, uh, I just want to swear in before we get started, uh, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Uh, my name is Michael Griffin, M I C H A E L. G R I F F I N.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin, good evening. Um, are you a member of the Morris Canal Community Development Corporation?
I am not.
Okay, thank you. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Michael Griffin, as stated earlier. Um, I am a Ward F resident. I don't live too far. Uh, from where this proposed project is. As a matter of fact, I am, uh, one of Val's neighbors. Um, I, I do agree that Ward F, uh, does need. Um. A recreation center. However, I don't think we should compromise. Um, the aesthetic of our community with the seventeen-story building with four hundred and seventy-one units. Uh, in an area where the majority is, uh, two, you know, one, two families. Uh, maximum height, maybe five stories. Um. I understand that the master plan, you know, asked for all of these give backs within it. But does all of these give backs have to be in one project? Because the more give backs you put into a project. The bigger the project is gonna be. Right? So, I mean, if it is just, let's say, recreation center, does it still have to be seventeen stories? All right, the, the, uh, developer stated that because he's doing all of these give backs. That he has to go that high because he has to pay for the project. He can't do ten percent. He must stay with five because of all of these give backs. And, you know, if, if this master plan is stating that, you know, if someone is going to. Uh, uh, if these, you know, if, if, if this, a, a plot of land is going to be given. Uh, in this particular area or any other area like it. That all of these give backs have to be put in it, then that, that should be changed. Um, you know, it, it should be limited. It, it would be easier on the community. Because when a community and, and the developer have these meetings. You know, it wouldn't be shocking or saying, oh, because we're putting, you know, we're gonna give you all of this, but. Because we're bringing all of this, we're going seventeen stories. We've gone four hundred and seventy-one units or four hundred and twenty-one units. And, and then a precedent is set to where Communipaw Avenue. Uh, before you know it, you'll never see the sun again. Or any other, you know, uh, area like that. And that's, that's all I have to say. Um, well, one more thing, uh, with the, with the new, um. Master plan coming out and, and this master plan that we're, you know, basing this project on is twenty-one years old. You know, maybe we should consider. Um. Tabling this, pushing it back, uh, and, and, and work on it from the new master plan. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. We appreciate your time. Okay, anybody else? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hands. And once again, if you're calling in and you'd like to comment on this, uh, please press star nine to raise your hands. Anyone else from public? If you could raise your hands, if you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hands. Okay, don't believe we have any more public comment. I'll entertain a motion to close public.
There, since there is no more public comment, I would like to move to close the public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is made. Public comment is closed on this application. Uh, Matt, do you have anything you want to wrap up with?
Yes, I do. Uh, just a very, uh, short citation from the. Excuse me, the local redevelopment housing law, uh, NJSA forty A, colon, twelve, A. Dash seven D. Which states, all provisions of the redevelopment plan shall either. Shall be either substantially consistent with the master plan or designed to effectuate the master plan. But the municipal governing body may adopt a redevelopment plan. Which is inconsistent with or not designed to effectuate the master plan by affirmative vote. Of a majority of its full authorized membership with the reasons for so acting set forth in the redevelopment plan. That being said, the testimony given by, uh, myself, um, and. Uh. In the memo dated twelve, seven, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we found that the amendments are. Uh, designed to effectuate the master plan. And staff recommends. Uh, the, the board recommend council approval.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Um. All right, I'll turn to the board. Uh, are we comfortable making a motion or do we want to discuss anything before we make a motion? Okay, with your silence, I'll. Say that we're gonna entertain a motion, I assume.
Chairman, if I may, uh. This is a remand. The board has its prior recommendation. And the remand was to. Review the prior recommendation and determine if that recommendation still holds. And why that recommendation was made vis a vis consistency with the master plan, so. Uh, that was what was. In the court's mind lacking originally was the finding of fact. As to consistency with the master plan. The board was clear that they felt it was consistent. It was the why that was. Where the court struggled. So I say that to you to help. The board in making its decision. Uh, so with that, Chairman. You can. We can do what you do best, which is guide the board.
Okay, so before we make the motion then, um. I guess I'd like to go through a few thoughts I have. Um, my. Illegible handwriting. I'll try and be as brief as possible, but I'll just hit some, you know, some things that stuck out to me. Um. You know, the master plan goals itself, um. It calls for high-quality residential areas that would serve existing and attract new residents. I, I think this project certainly does that. Um. The increased availability of community resources for residents through an efficient system. Of shared citywide resources such as libraries, hospitals, colleges, universities, recreational facilities. Uh, you know, I said it the first time we voted on this, that the small business minority-owned. Woman-owned, veteran-owned business incubators is huge. It's, it's a game changer, I think. And it, it certainly supports the goals of the master plan. Um, the, the rec center, I, I'm getting ahead of myself right now, but let me, let me take a step back. Um. The affordable housing, it, it's, you know, the housing objective goals of the master plan state that. We should look towards market rate and deed restricted affordable housing. That's in this plan. Uh, it's clear as day, it's in this plan. We're changing the industrial use to a pedestrian plaza. That's in a, an open space aspect. Um. It's certainly vacant land and unused property right now. It's being changed to a productive use. Um. The historic preservation goals. We're restoring or the, the applicant is restoring and repurposing the steel tech headhouse. Um, into a commercial use, so that folds into the economic development objectives. I. You know, I fail to see that it doesn't meet these goals. Um. You know, Councilman LaVaro brings up a point that there are inconsistencies in the master plan. And Matt just spoke to that. If, if we go through a seven-hundred-page document. Uh, I'm sure we'll find inconsistencies i- if we pick a sentence out here, a sentence out there. There are clear goals and objectives of the master plan. And it's crystal clear to me that this site, this, um, redevelopment plan amendment hits those goals. The two thousand eight recreation and open space goals. The pedestrian plaza is in there, the rec center is in there. It, it's the way the plan is. It, it's the way the plan is worded compared to the master plan. It's almost word for word. Um there's the community facilities objectives. Again, the community rec center is in there, the, the public plaza that's going to host community events, maybe a farmer's market, maybe an art show. They're all in there. Um as far as the density goes, it's, you know, that speaks to the circulation element goals. It's within walking distance of a light rail station. Of course, citywide, we want more, more density towards mass transit. Um that's, you know, spelled out in the circulation. Um that's what I'm basing my decision on. It, it's with the consistency of the master plan. Um you know, there's, there's the talk about what the developer paid for it, what the city failed to pay for it. The, the numbers of what the developer paid, what the city was willing to pay, why the city didn't purchase the property in the past.